Good evening. This is the May 17th, 2017 ZBA meeting. I apologize for, it took me some time to get here from Boston due to the traffic, so thank you for your patience. So this is, the first matter on the agenda is a continued public hearing on the special permit application, Colt Realty LLC. This is regarding Five Hillside Avenue. And at our last hearing, I think it was two weeks ago, we had a presentation and some public comment, and we continued it so that we could get a legal opinion from Town Council about whether the part of the bylaw which says that we can't grant the permit unless we find that the cost of the extension alteration or change would exceed 50% of the assessed value of the non-conforming structure at the time of the application. Because that's something that's specifically in the bylaw. And then, the applicant's attorney was saying that because of this Gale versus ZBA Gloucester decision, that we actually, because of state law, can't apply that cost requirement of our local bylaw. So Karen, can you read this into the record, please?
Oh wow.
Okay, it's not that long. Just so everyone has the benefit of it.
(laughing) May 17th, 2017, opinion request, Five Hillside Avenue, application for special permit, alteration change to existing non-conforming structure. Mr. Chairman and Board members, you have requested an opinion relative to the application by the owner of property at Five Hillside Avenue as to the provisions of MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, relative to a single-family dwelling and the provisions of the South Borough zoning code, Section 174-9E, particularly in addition, additional criteria for special permit which states in relevant part that the cost thereof shall not exceed 50% of the assessed value of a non-conforming structure at the time of the application. In this regard, we offer the following legal opinion. Statutory protections for extension or alteration of pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses in Chapter 48, Section 6 have been described as difficult in, in flesh? How do I say the word? (laughing) Anyway, there have been cited two specific cases decided under Chapter 48, Section 6. The Gale versus ZBA of Gloucester case and the Goldhurst versus McNair case for the proposition that it, that as to a legally non-conforming, single or two-family residential structure, a local bylaw cannot impose additional restrictions beyond the two-step inquiry in the second accept clause of Chapter 48, Section 6. Prior to the judicial determination in Gale versus ZBA Gloucester, AD Mass App CT 331, 2011, it would have been this office, office opinion that the 50% bylaw criteria was enforceable in conjunction with the other application requirements both under the bylaw and the state statute. However, the Gale case is compelling and does not stand for the judicial determination that the two-part framework in Chapter 48, Section 6, does not include application of local bylaw provisions as an additional step when proceeding to the so-called "no substantial detriment" finding defined in Section 6. Accordingly, we conclude as to the application for zoning relief before you that the criteria to be analyzed is, A, determine and identify the particular respect or respects in which the existing structure does not conform to the present bylaw, and then determine whether any proposed extension, alteration, or addition would increase the existing non-conformities or result in additional ones. And B, if the answer to the first analysis is affirmative, then the Board is required and authorized to proceed to the second finding of whether there is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. We further note in the case of Borkland versus ZBA Norwell, 450 Mass, 357, 2008, the court preserved Board discretion under Chapter 48, Section 6, for a ZBA to determine whether an alteration, change, or addition of an existing dwelling is substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming status and its effect in the neighborhood. Accordingly, as to the facts of this particular case, it is our considered legal opinion that the ZBA should not apply the 50% rule in the bylaw and should stringently evaluate the other two criteria, both specific in the, specified in the bylaw provisions cited above, and in this opinion analysis to ensure no substantially detrimental harm to the neighborhood. This opinion is rendered solely upon the facts of the particular case and should not be applied to any other fact situation without proper consideration, a proper consultation of counsel. Respectfully submitted, Aldo A. Cepriano.
Aldo, would you like to speak to that and answer any questions that the Board members may have about it?
Well, I simply tried to make it as clear as I could based upon the analysis. And this is something that, this 50% rule is in some bylaws. I've seen it elsewhere, but I believe in really scrutinizing that case law that we could not adequately enforce that criteria based upon what I've read relative to this application. However, I'm cautioning you that those other two criteria, which are in the state statute and reflected in our bylaw, are compelling. So you've got to really bear down on that and ensure that that, those are in fact met. And in citing the Borkland case, it was, it was just a way to reinforce the compelling nature of those two other standards. And I say, as a footnote, the theory here, we believe, is that towns be able to retain some form of control over possible mini-mansions which could decrease availability of housing market entry-level homes. That's a theory, but the standard is clear in there. I think you addressed it before. It's a factual analysis, and then you make a determination if it meets that criteria.
Any questions from the Board members? So basically, the issues are, in what respect is the existing structure not conform to the present bylaw? And I think it's the, the non-conformities are that the front setback-
Correct.
-is not met, and that there's a lot size.
Is this one, does I need to be aware of it? Oh yes.
Here, Trevor, is that mic on? Okay.
Okay, so, front setback, correct. And the area?
The lot size is too small. And the, the project is not going to make any of those two non-conformities worse, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The garage portion that will be, is part of the addition, is actually set back more than the current house.
Okay. And then the next question is, would the proposed addition, because it's not an extension, or would the proposed alteration or addition increase the existing? Okay, I think we've got the first one. Basically, it, it all falls on, is there a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, basically?
That's correct. Bruce is actually here. I think he probably drove fast, because he said it would take him 20 minutes-
I had the same issue.
...and that was less than 20 minutes ago.
There was a lot of traffic on Route 30.
But he performed a storm water management report which was requested at the last meeting that we could make some sort of determination as to the position that we took that the storm water management would be, the storm water leaving the site runoff would be less, so.
Okay, let's take this off here. I have, I made three copies for you. I didn't know how many copies you needed, but at the last meeting you had requested a report, so I quantified everything, put everything in there. And the essentially, just want to draw your attention to purpose and summary. That's on the first part of this, first section of the report there. And I'll just be really brief about it. I had presented the plan to you last time, just to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about here. Let's bring this plan back out, which shows the general drainage area.
Is that location okay for the easel? Can you see?
Pardon me?
Do you need me to move the easel?
No, I can see it. I can see it. It's on TV, too.
Okay, good.
Yeah, okay. So what ends up happening is, the drainage area for this site is depicted on that illustration. The total drainage area is, is quite substantial, considering that Lot 5 on Hillside is only about 10,000 square feet, and you have this little area here on the neighbor's property. They, they both are tributary to 9 and 11, which are having all the problems with the runoff and everything else, and nobody's arguing that. They have issues down there, groundwater and everything.
And is that just because they're lower?
They are lower. They're downstream. So what happened during our investigation, just to recap, I was out there, I found out that the water from here, this orange-colored area here, is tributary, flows down the street. The street is tilted sideways towards Lot 5. Lot 5, the driveway is, the parking space is about five, four to five feet below the road, so you're driving down. Everything is flowing down across the road into Lot 5, and then into the properties of 9 and 11, Lyman Street. And so, the proposed plan is going to put, make sure there's curbing in here and also elevate that driveway and garage. So now it's reverse pitch. So it's going to reverse pitch back to the road. And on top of that, we're going to put roof leaders in and direct from the ridge line of the roof, that's halfway, midway of the house and the garage, back to the road as well. So what happens is, the total drainage area is, gets diverted from here as, as shown on this one here, which is on existing conditions. Now, if you look at the proposed condition drainage area in the back of that report there, you're going to see what will happen with the new drainage area, which is what's being diverted. So if you look at that, you're going to see that this whole area gets diverted away, and a portion of Lot 5 gets diverted away. That's the last page, by the way. It's always back there. So one is the existing condition drainage area. The second one is the proposed, that we're proposing. And you'll see there that this whole area gets diverted out. A portion of Lot, of the number 5, Hillside, gets diverted out as well. So we're taking out, it turns out, 73% of the drainage area gets taken out and shifted down Hillside Ave. The water that flows down to the drain system that's located on Lyman Street. That's where it should go. The DPW Director Superintendent has agreed to that curbing, and you've got a document of that. That was given to you at the last meeting. But just to give you an idea of the reduction, just to summarize here, the reduction of flow is broken down for two, three storms, the two-year, the 10-year, and the 100-year storm. So that is on the first section there, that little table. And so the percent reduction in runoff for the two-year storm is, goes from 1.9 CFS to half a CFS. So that's a 73% reduction in runoff. Likewise, the 10-year storm is a 72% reduction, and 100-year storm is a 71% reduction. So what will happen now is, under proposed conditions, the 100-year runoff into the, these both properties here will be about two, two CFS, which is approximately the same as what they're getting now for the, for the two-year storm. So that's quite a significant improvement as far as the drainage conditions, not only on the property of 9 and 11 Lyman Street, but also for Five Hillside, because they're not going to see that water either. So you're improving three properties at one time.
Is that because of the raising of the driveway?
Raising the driveway and putting curbing in. And also putting curbing in on the driveway, so anything that falls on the driveway has to also get out to the road. It's only got one place to go, because it's going to be pitching 3% back to Lyman, to Hillside.
Mr. Chairman, under the, these, all these water conditions, we've had complaints from other people in sight. I would think if the Board would consider it, that we send it, we approve it, but it goes to the Planning Board, and they'd be involved in the engineering of the water because it affects all those houses on the bottom end of that property and everything. And there's been letters in review of it for us, which technically, there's so much water issue on that property, that it's something that the Planning Board should be reviewing and looking at, I think. I don't know if the Board agrees with it or not, but it would be the proper thing to do for the neighbors. And Town, Kevin Gallagher would also be involved in that.
Well, I don't necessarily agree. I mean, I think that the Planning Board has a role in site plan review. This does, this isn't major site plan review or minor site plan review. Dave, do you have a?
Well, I just, I would think Karen Gallagher would probably be more of an expert on, on the effectiveness of it than the Planning Board. I understand Lee's point, but I, I really think somebody like Karen would lend a little bit more expertise there.
Yeah, and what she explained is that she is going to put that into the next budget for that curbing. And on top of that, she said, just to assure that, and she wholeheartedly believes it should be done. She realizes the problem and, of this drainage, that she's even given permission to the applicant and to do it himself, which is, to me, is, you know, is a very nice gesture. And also convincing that it has to be done and should be done quickly.
Did you, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Sure, and then could you, yeah.
Sue Grimblatus at 15 Lyman Street.
Yeah, actually, how about this, could one of, sorry, could you take down that plan? And then you can just leave the podium there? Okay, thanks.
I had a couple of questions. I mean, I have, obviously haven't seen the report. And as-
Can you hear me again?
Sue Grimblatus, Susan Grimblatus, 15 Lyman.
Okay.
But I haven't, I've been there since before 11 Lyman was there, before, you know, Five Hillside was already there, but I've been in this particular neighborhood for 19 years and seen what the land was like prior to, 11 Lyman being developed, prior to 8 Lyman going from a small little ranch to a much bigger property with, seeing all the septic systems go in, seeing all the different problems that have happened with them. So the lot at 11 Lyman Street and continuing all the way back to the other end of Hillside, where there's five houses way down at the end, there's an underground stream that runs all the way from that. It runs through the bottom of Overlook. It runs through the Ferris's property until he diverted it. It runs through the houses that are there. It used to be a berry farm that belonged to Capasos because it was all wet, wet, wetlands. And that stream, each one of these houses that has been developed, has diverted that more and consolidated it more. When, the lot that was 11 Lyman Street was about 10 feet below grade from the existing Hillside. It, and it was a swamp, until the summer of 1999, when it didn't rain for five weeks and it was 95 degrees, and they cleared the lot, and amazingly, it perked after a five-week drought. And it was filled in with five truckloads, huge truckloads of fill, in order to build up the house on top of it. And then on top of that was the septic system. So that underground stream continued to run through there. And when 11 went in, they, right off the bat, and I'm sure my neighbor who owns that house could tell you more, right off the bat, there were problems with water coming through the foundation, like the stream- right off the bat, there were problems with water coming through the foundation, like the stream coming through. So that got fixed. And guess what? Water runs downhill. So then the house next door at Nine Lyman had huge water problems. And they put in French drains as, you know, I know one of the board members was somewhat involved. He's not here and he's recused himself, I believe, or just absent. It was his sister-in-law's house. And he saw what the amount of water damage that went through that place. It was pouring out of both houses. At Nine Lyman, it continues to pour out. They continuously pump water out of the basement of that house. This is not during just storms. This is not about a runoff issue. There's an underground water that goes through. When Tony Kwan has tried to argue about putting a huge development of 55 and older at the top of Lyman off of Newton, one of the issues that's come up is that underground water, because the Newton Street has had problems with the water. And it, it's all part of the same system. So while fixing the grade of Lyman's, of Hillside may be necessary as a different issue, and curbing may help that, it may not, it's not going to change the fact that there's this groundwater issue that is affecting those houses. And that every time something changes, it's been diverted. At Eleven Lyman Street, when the new owners of Five Hillside did the septic, there were new cracks that formed and water began to pour through the cracks. And that was just from the disruption of the surrounding property. In addition, a significant number of trees have been cleared that presumably were soaking up a lot of that groundwater. This particular proposal, it does not exacerbate the setback from the street issue, but it does create a new setback issue from the lot line between the properties. It's much closer than the existing dwelling to the lot line. In fact, like, very close to it.
The garage or?
The garage, yep. It's, it substantially encroaches beyond what the setback requirement is. So that's part of the issue as well. And the fact that, that the, the trees and everything that were in there kind of helping with the water issue, not to mention a shield between the properties, that adds to the problem. So I guess I would want to know on the, this, the water study, whether or not consideration was given to the properties at Eleven and Nine as far as the groundwater, like what examination of that was done, or was this just during, looking at runoff from Hillside? And in keeping with the, the concept of things running downhill, Eight Hillside, while they're not here today, has had substantial issues as each of these properties have gone in. That is the most low-lying of them all. They have done a lot to fill in their own, their property, but it continues, the existing foundation is the most low-lying before you get to Newton Street. So in looking at the proposal about putting in the curbing and putting in, changing the grade, the examination stops before you look at what comes downhill. Though this one storage, a storm drain that is in front of Nine Hillside is regularly overflowing during a regular storm, because it is at the lowest point. But if we're saying that we're going to add to that, I would be concerned about what the effect is on the other downhill properties, particularly Eight. So I guess in addition to the question about whether or not groundwater was examined, or was it just a runoff issue, I was curious, like, did they, did the expert walk the neighboring properties or talk to the existing homeowners of those properties to see what their water issues have been? Thank you.
Does anyone else have some comment to make? Any of the butters? Do you want to address?
Sure, yeah. Okay, what we did is, we did a stormwater, we gave you a stormwater report. We didn't do a groundwater analysis. We wholeheartedly agree that there's groundwater, there's groundwater issues over there. As a matter of fact, back in 1988, we had done soil testing over there and found the groundwater to be very high over Lyman Street in that location. So it is a ground, the groundwater table is very high. It's, it's like a hillside till condition that's over there. There's no underground river or brook or anything like that. It's, it's really just high groundwater is what it is. It's very common and off the hillsides like that, you'll get some breakout conditions that occur. And everything that's falling on top of a big hill, it's working its way down. And as soon as there's a break in slope or change in soil types, you're going to have groundwater conditions like that. So there's a very, it's a till-y area and till has a, a chance to be very high groundwater, let's put it that way. And so the, so that's, that's a separate issue that's over there. That's a groundwater issue. Now, as far as the stormwater, the stormwater cutting across the two properties at Nine and Eleven Lyman Street is not very helpful to the groundwater conditions, because what's happening there is groundwater is recharged by surface water in all instances. And so by just having the water run across your yard, it's just going to recharge the groundwater, make your situation a lot worse. Anybody knows that. If you have a house and it's got gutters versus non-gutters, it makes a difference as far as how much water you're going to get in the basement. It's just common sense. So you don't want water running through your yard. It's in everybody's best interest on these three properties to, to avoid having that volume of water cutting across their property. So it, it'll alleviate some of the issue. They will always have high groundwater there. But the, by, but you have to do as much as you possibly can because of large volume of surface water is coming off the site. So that does its own damage there. So what we're proposing to do is, is improve the drainage situation that's over there. We're not here to fix every problem that they have with the groundwater, with the septic systems, or whatever else they have there. So that's the objective. That's the, a purpose of, of the improvements here. Because we're only looking at a small lot and taking an existing house and doing improvements on that house, as well as improving some of the drainage runoff conditions. So it's, it's beyond the scope here to get into a hydro geo study on your neighbor's properties that everybody knows in this room that it's got longstanding groundwater issues there. And it's, it's been there for many years.
Any members of the board have questions?
I did have one.
Debbie was gonna.
Oh, you have something, Debbie?
I can wait.
Okay, sorry. And this might be directed towards Ms. Grimblatas. And it's hard to know now, but regarding the, the storm drain, has the town ever done anything to try to improve that situation? I mean, I, because obviously the whole thing is based on you're diverting it. It ends up, and I know exactly where that storm drain is. Seems like it's in a good location, but if it's not functioning like it's supposed to, it's not helping that much. Do you have any knowledge of the history there, of what has been attempted?
I do know, I think it was raised somewhat.
Excuse me, can you get the microphone?
It was, I think, not specifically. I think it was raised somewhat when they last did the roads. And it, the whole, the bottom out sort of situation that was there was raised a little bit. And that, so the puddling at the bottom of the, the hill seems to have been alleviated somewhat. As far as anything else, no. I don't know of any kind of larger efforts to fix the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle Walker, Eleven Lyman Street. The two neighbors at Eight Lyman that also have the underground stream going through it, so I highly debate that fact. They have had extensive water damage. They, they bought granite curbing and put that in to alleviate that and planted extra plants. And what was the guy's name that used to own the White House, number 10? He was a town member. He put, he got Arthur Sisson, got them to put a berm in that is not sufficient for the corner. I mean, there is so much erosion on the corner from Hillside to Eleven, I would say, a couple of feet onto my property, that, that's not what I'm concerned about at all. I'm concerned about my leaking basement from the, what happens when the pressure of a two-car garage goes right up against my property. Never mind the visual of it. It's literally up against my property. He cut down all these trees that my neighbor and I had planted there to establish some privacy. Granted, it's on the 10-foot strip that our other neighbors own, but no communication, none. So I'm really concerned about, and I want to guarantee that my basement won't leak when he puts that addition on. If you can do that, great.
Could I?
Sure.
Oh, unless the board has any additional questions. As to the, if we could dial back, I've been saving them up. So previously, when Mr. Bartolini spoke about perhaps the planning board, I would suggest that the best way to address those areas of concern, which were the curbing and the roof drain and the gutters and the curbing along the driveway would be addressed as conditions in the, in the special permit. I also want to mention, I did work with Karen, I called Karen and asked her if I could have a draft of what your format usually looks like, only to, to serve as a helpful guide for us if we needed to, make it easier to discuss points tonight for that and for the use in the future. But it will probably be useful if we can address those things as conditions to the permit.
Okay, I have a question about the berm that Karen Gallagher suggested in her letter written from DPW. What, how much of the diversion is coming just simply from DPW putting in the berm around the corner as she's outlined it? How much of, how do we weigh how much of a benefit you're going to get from the berm, which frankly, she can do at any time, but we know that she's waiting for the new budget. We talked about possibly a July timeframe. How much of a benefit do you get from that versus a detriment from building an additional two-car attached garage, which is impervious with the additional water flow? How do you weigh that? I mean, if I were a neighbor, I would, I'd call the DPW and ask them to install that thing as soon as possible. So then I'm looking at your plan and wondering, what are you, you know, how much additional benefit will the neighbors get by the grade and these other, you know, things that you've suggested? How do you measure that?
Okay, yeah, let me explain it. I'll use the graphic that's up there, house site plan, if I can. We have the existing condition plan. I can start there first, okay? And walk this through. Okay, in our existing conditions, I hope you can see this plan here. You have a road and it's, the, the pitch of this road is in this direction going out this way. So everything's flowing down. If you go out there, you'll see there's actually erosion caused down here at the corner of the parking area. Now envision this, if you park your car back over here, it is four to five feet below the road. So if you're going to buy this site, and you all seen the site, if you drove by it, you drive by it, and somebody drives a car, it's downhill and they have to park the car down in this low area here. Now, as long as this, that stays that way, where somebody's driveway is going to pitch down like this, the water is going to follow it, follow that water, want it to follow it anyway. So one of the objectives here is to raise this up substantially in order to reverse the pitch so that it's, it's flowing from this point, instead of down into here, it's flowing, pitching back towards the road. That prevents the water from naturally flowing down in that direction. So that's key as far as keeping the water from here down to here. Because if you just put the curbing in there, you're still going to have this driveway pitched down this way. You're still going to have that issue. It's not, you're, you're going to improve it somewhat, but the main issue is this, it's like a sluice way. It's operating as like a sluice way currently. And it's just a path for the water to get down there very easily. So in my, in my opinion, it's not going to be a significant improvement unless you, you raise this driveway and pitch it back to the road. Because that's how the water's getting in there.
So that has nothing to do with the structures though, right? So what if you raise the driveway, improve the pitch, put in the berm? Now we're talking about the addition of the two-car garage. So I'm trying to, in my head, understand what is the detriment to the neighbors by the addition to this property? How do you measure that?
It's, it's a, it complies with zoning as far as the, the offset to the property line. The zoning is 15 feet. The garage is 16 feet off the property line. It's closest point. So it's, it's, from an offset standpoint, if this was a, and we're, we're getting out of the whole issue here, but this, this garage is not any closer than what's allowed everywhere else in town as far as offsets go. So to not put the garage in there would be to say, okay, it's, doesn't comply with zoning as far as setback offset, but it, it does. So I don't, I don't know where you're going there with that. But it, I would think that as far as budgetary goes, it's, I mean, and I don't do the budget and Steve is, it's his house, but I'm not sure if it is viable. I mean, the whole, the driveway and the garage kind of go together. So if you take one away, the other may not work. As far as the budget goes, I'm not sure. Because we haven't really looked at that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the thing is, this water issue is a major issue, all right? And I think maybe they don't want to do the planning board, but maybe this meeting should be continued and we have Karen Gallagher from the Highway Department come here, because we do have a responsibility for the rest of the neighborhood there and what is going to happen with all this water. So I mean, if Karen came, then that would help us know what we are properly doing. And I think that would be maybe one way of handling this properly. Because that is an issue with all the neighbors is the water.
Craig?
I agree that water's an issue, but I don't believe it's the applicant's responsibility to solve for high groundwater in the general area of town. You know, I think the, the criteria we can hold them to is the water that's going to be generated from their site by the proposed improvements to the site. And I think thus far, they've shown a fair amount of effort and data to show that they're going to mitigate that as much as humanly possible. You know, I saw the emails about trees. I think absolutely we can throw needing to have some plantings and trees on the Lyman Street side of their property line to help with further erosion and to help with water absorption. I would be, I would be up for that, but I, I don't think we can hold them accountable for high water.
So I, I have kind of the same view that, so the issue is, is it more substantially more detrimental? And with the house, it's not increasing the non-conformity. It's going to build another house on the existing foundation, so you wouldn't have any issues about building a new foundation, having it going deeper. For the, for the garage, I agree that, you know, that's a, that's a condition that we commonly have. It's a vegetative screen along the side that would be most impacted. I didn't think of that, that the, the plants would also absorb some of the water. And then I think you were saying you're, you would put gutters there, so the water would come down, there'd be a roof.
Correct.
And that some of it on the north side, you could, would go into a gutter and go right into that same driveway and go out towards the street. And on the back side, I don't know. I mean, if it, even if it went to the backyard, that's still where the water would go anyway, right? Because it would fall down even now without the garage. It would just fall down into the, into the dirt and ultimately go into the groundwater, right?
Yeah, the, the, what's happened there is the, from the ridge line back, ridge line forward, I should say, of both the garage and the, in the house, it, it will be flow to the front of the house, to the, to the roof leaders, and they will take the flow out via the driveway that's got curbing in it and it's got nowhere else to go but out to the street. What that'll do is it'll reduce the amount of opportunity for groundwater, for surface water to get into the ground, because it's being diverted, you know, around Nine and Eleven to the drain system as opposed to the backyard where it's currently going. And so the more surface water that's on the surface, it's going to have more opportunity to, to recharge into ground. Just like the water that's coming from across the street that I showed you, all that other water, surface area, all that, if that's flowing across Nine and Eleven, that's also has more opportunity to recharge. And we know that there's, it's a longstanding problem going back 30 years, because that's when we were out there soil testing. because that's when we were out there soil testing back in 88. There's always been high groundwater in that area. And it's not going to correct all the problem. But what it's going to do is, is, you know, and we're looking at stormwater here, but it's also going to, it's going to have a more positive impact on the amount of water that's going to go into the ground. We haven't done a hydro geo study on it. We're more interested in taking care of the surface water, but it's, the byproduct of that is going to be less water getting into the ground.
On Debbie's question, I'd like the foundation of the garage. It's not going to, it's not going to have a foundation, we're just going to go deep into the.
It's a slab.
But how would that affect the groundwater?
Slab, it's a slab.
Okay.
So it's not going to have a.
Also, are you going to fill that in, is what you're saying?
Yes, where the garage is, that's, you've got to raise that.
Existing driveway that's here presently, all right? That's four to five feet, you're going to fill that in?
It's got to be filled in.
All right, now if you do that, you have to stay within 10 feet of the property line. Otherwise, you have to get a special permit to do that also. So that's something that should be discussed with this, with this board and we don't have an engineering drawing showing any of this stuff, which is not good.
And what, what provision does it require? You can't put dirt within 10 feet of.
Because you're filling, you cannot fill within the property line, within 10 feet without a permit.
I don't know if that's true.
Is that a conservation commission question then?
And the thing is, by filling that property in, the five or six feet, there already is a bottom slope that's four to five feet in the, in the, on 11 and nine. And I'm going to raise it up another five or six feet on top of that. And just for natural, it's still going to put more water down in through there.
Oh, I think what he's saying, there's no zoning law that prevents you from doing that, but it, it's from a practical standpoint, which when you put in a bankman in, I think what you're saying at the toe of the slope, you have to make sure the water's not going directly into your neighbor's property. You have to channel it towards the back of your property.
Anything that you go to do within 10 feet of a property line, a stone wall, a fence, or anything, you need to get a permit for it. If you do it and stay away from 10 feet of the property line, then you don't need to do it. But then I don't think you'll have enough room to do what you have to do.
I'd like to have Mrs. Grindlottis.
Yes.
I know I'm trying to kind of move things towards a discussion ultimately where we can kind of take a straw poll about what we want to do and whether we want to continue or vote tonight, but I'd like you to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I first want to say that as, I'm not here to speak on behalf of all my neighbors. I can say that the gist of what I've heard and speaking for myself, we're not inherently opposed to improvement of this property. So I just want to be clear on that, that it's not, you know, like a NIMBY sort of situation. And in fact, it's not my backyard at all. But the, several times, we've raised the issue that the study, there's been no study whatsoever looking at the groundwater issue. Yes, it's an existing problem. Yes, it's been there for a long time. No, it's not incumbent upon the existing homeowner looking to a non-conforming variance to fix the groundwater problem for the entire neighborhood. However, it is incumbent upon them and this board to not exacerbate that problem by allowing a non-conforming structure to be built there. The, you know, slab of the concrete for, by taking off vegetation, that was the suggestion about putting in the trees in was to, in fact, to soak up that groundwater. It, it's been a marked difference just from the putting in the septic system, the relatively small amount of activity that was done in that backyard, with the trucks coming in and out with the digging and with taking down the trees resulted in significant change in groundwater issues for the neighbors. So the concern is that there's been no examination of how this would do that. And I don't know if that's prohibitively expensive to do, but the question was asked by the board and by the abutters, what's the impact on the groundwater situation? And the answer was, well, the impact on the runoff is this. Well, that doesn't answer the question about what's the impact on the groundwater situation? And is this project that's non-conforming going to increase the problems that it are having? As for the curbing situation, I think it would be useful to have Karen Gallagher or the board or whoever the appropriate people to do it, go out and look at it. On the corner of Michelle's lot on 11, nobody can make that turn if, you know, in anything larger than an SUV without running over her property. Which is why she put the bushes there, because trucks were regularly running over her property. If you sat there and watched, you would see that there, the part of the gully that's there isn't just from the runoff, it's from people just taking the corner. So I'm, my concern would be if you put a curb in there, does that affect things like the school bus? I don't know. And I don't know if that's something that would be part of the examination. And I understand, again, I, my sympathy to the poor property owner who has to put up with all this, but it's time that it be addressed before making the situation worse by either doing the curbing thing, which sounds like a great idea, but there are issues that haven't been addressed, which is the practicality of actually living in the neighborhood and seeing how cars come in and out and how the water actually runs out. Like, did you go out there in the big rainstorm and watch it? Maybe you did, maybe you didn't, I don't know. But I have and it'd be a useful, practical thing. So maybe it should be continued to examine. And then the other issue that was raised in the letter is, should there be a bond? I mean, she's already out several thousand dollars to fix the cracks from doing the new septic system. If she's out more thousands of dollars to fix, or, or the other neighbors are, to fix their foundations from water pouring through or other landscaping issues that they have to do because of what changes have been done on that lot, who is responsible for that? Can there be a bond for that or any other assurances that can be, help out with the situation?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to ask Mr. Cipriano if he could have a comment on the legal, the issues that we have here. What would be the proper way to get him to find on all these different issues? As far as planning board or the, you know, the public, Karen Gallagher at the Highway Department to be here to, you know, because there is so many issues with this. And it's to do it properly for them, but also properly for the abutters.
Also, what about, could we, is a bond an appropriate condition?
That is an interesting proposal and I've seen that, I've seen that occur depending on the compelling nature of the issue. So it'll, it'll depend what the position is of the applicant, but a bond, you know, from what I've heard and the concerns that have been raised, that may be appropriate as part of a special permit. Mr. Bartolini, I know of no requirement that this go to the planning board.
Well, then what about having.
I know no bylaw provision that indicates that. This is, this rests directly with this board as the zoning board.
Right, but there's some major water issues with this.
And.
Basically, we have to decide them, not the planning.
Correct, you decide those and if you need guidance from town agencies or officials to address your concerns, you are permitted to get that information.
Can I speak as to the bond?
Yeah.
We would take the position that it's not appropriate for a bond to be required for this project because it is a, it's a, simply a finding whether or not it's more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. But it's not a traditional special permanent under your normal requirements.
But as a condition to that finding, anything that's reasonable to mitigate that detrimental conduct is permissible. So I will stand on the position that based upon what I heard, a bond would, a reasonable bond would be appropriate to address the concerns of the residents.
So you want to move to a, you have comments or questions?
On the, on the driveway, how would you, what's your plan on the fill? Are you, are you creating the berm and using just natural slope to hold that in place? Are you doing a retaining wall? What's the engineering plan for all that fill and keeping it in place?
Yeah, there's, there's no retaining wall, it's going to be sloped to the side. I can show you on the proposed plan here. And the fill material, it's going to be a, kind of like a structural fill that's going to be compacted. It's going to go below the driveway and also the slab of the garage. Because garage is going to be, everything's going to be higher than the existing grade. So, so that material would have to be compacted and rolled and to meet a certain density for accepting the driveway and also the slab of the garage. And it's going to be brought up. So the, 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 the flow pattern of the groundwater will not change because we're going to be above the ground, existing ground, if you will. So we're filling above it. And so we're not really kind of creating an underground dam or any sort of thing like that, which was, I think was one of the concerns by the abutters. So we're actually above that elevation. So the, the fill come up and it'll be compacted and the driveway will pitch back to the road. That'll, that'll, that'll take care of, and essentially, I got the number here. The amount of water that, a square footage area of the, the site itself, Five Hillside property, that'll be diverted out to the road is 1,668 square feet, which is approximately 17% of the lot area itself is going to be diverted out to the road. So, so that's, that's, somebody asked that question, that's the number that's diverted because of the driveway itself, the front part of the area near the driveway and also the two roof areas. But I'd just like to make a comment to the chair. The, it seems like there is a, we're looking at a petition before you for, for Lot Five Hillside. We know the whole area, the hillside area has, has got water, groundwater issues. Like I said, we were out there in 1988, did soil testing out there. Could even protest it back then because of the groundwater. So it's an ongoing condition since, for almost 30 years that I know of from my personal experience. And the, and it's, it's been going on for a long time. And it's going to go on probably indefinitely because this project is not going to correct the groundwater table that's on a side of a drumlin. They're just trying to put a house up. So to, this is a, an issue that is, is a public works issue as far as running a drain up the road or contacting whoever the consultant is, Fussin' O'Neill, whoever they're using for, for the consultant to budget some infrastructure. And we're all for that. We think that's a great idea. If the town can put a budget together and redo the whole road all the way up Lyman Street, put sub drains in and go at it. But that's not what this is about. I think this is getting, it's got like the tail wagging a dog here, in my view.
Okay, so now, we've now had, you know, probably two, two and a half hours of the hearing on this. So I'd like to just get a sense from the board about, feels like some people might want to continue, others feel like we can decide now. We just begin with Debbie and go down the line here. How do you, how do you feel in terms of, do you want more information before you make a decision? Or do you feel like you can make a decision now? And if so, how do you feel?
No, I think we can make a decision now. So, I mean, I admire the intent to make this a nice lot and beautify a lot and take care of some of the, the issues that exist. But what I've heard from a direct abutter, I think, is compelling. And I don't know that the additional attached garage, the two-car attached garage, doesn't add to the detriment of the neighborhood. So I think that I have, I have an issue with that. If you're just going to take the house down, put up a nice house, try to address some of the, the issues. I think many of us probably feel that there'd be, there'd be no issue. For me in particular, it's the, it's the addition and it's the two-car attached garage. I've heard that any taking down of the trees and putting in the septic and anytime this property is changed, the neighbors are adversely impacted and this is a financial impact. And so I don't think that I could vote for it. I would be voting against it.
David?
Well, I, I concur with what Craig was saying earlier that, I mean, I think what they're proposing here would clearly improve the runoff situation. Debbie's right that if you just did the house, it's, it's pretty straightforward. The, the part that concerns me about the garage, and I know bringing it in does complicate things, is, is the point brought up by Ms. Grindlottis about what's the, what's the impact on the groundwater? But unfortunately, I mean, the only way to, to get a grip on that is to have somebody come in and render an opinion on what exactly that would do. I don't know if that's Karen Gallagher or if that's the Fussin' O'Neill study. So that's the one thing that's kind of holding me back is, is, I think that's probably a valid point that if it is a disruption to the groundwater, which is not the homeowner's problem, the groundwater, it's hard to make that the homeowner's problem, it's a neighborhood problem. But, so I would be leaning more towards continuing to try to find a little bit more expert opinion on what that means.
Craig?
I, I'm for the, the proposed plan. I think by diverting the runoff, you help with the groundwater. I don't think it's their responsibility. What I don't have comfort with to necessarily make a decision and complete this is what additional conditions we would want to put on the approval. You know, we can all sit here and say some trees, but how many trees do we need? You know, are there other mitigations that can be done to help the potential impact of the already horrible groundwater? Those are the things that I'm not prepared to make a decision on. But otherwise, I'm for the proposal in general.
Lee?
I'm agreeing with the rest of the board except for one decision that we had talked about was removing the house back 30 feet off of the main road. And that would be something that we'd put in our decision, we discussed it also. And I think continuing this would be the proper way to go about it.
I think moving the house back 30 feet is just going to exacerbate things more. You're going to have new foundations and more digging and more disruption of.
The thing about the property, there will be no more digging because it's going downhill, it's flat. And if they move it back off of the road, then that water that comes down now is way up in the air and it just comes all down. It's going to make it even better if that was back and it was controlled better, you know?
So how I feel is pretty much like Craig. I think that, you know, the issue is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I think that I would be prepared to vote for it and have a finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood about the, you know, the garage and the issue we're talking about. How would the addition of the garage affect the, the storm flow? I think we already discussed that. On the, on the groundwater, I don't see how it really would affect it if it's not putting a foundation into the ground. So I would be prepared tonight to vote on it and to grant, find that it's not substantially more detrimental, grant the permit and have conditions like gutters, curbing, vegetative screening along the Lyman side. And then maybe the bond. But it sounds like at least two people, one person is opposed, two people want to continue. So I'm fine with continuing it. I think we have until.
June 28th.
June 28th.
June, June 28th.
We have until June 28th. That was our last extension, I think.
Right.
So, you know, what we have been trying to do is, we're hopefully in a situation where we could have one hearing tonight and then we could meet just once in June. If we continue it until the third Wednesday in June, we're going to be up against that deadline.
But it doesn't give you 14 days.
Yeah. So.
The third of June?
No, the third Wednesday.
Are people willing to continue to? Well, we could do those on June 28th or June 21st. Okay. Okay. So how is Wednesday, June 7th?
Andrew, the, the first two full weeks of June are, are fine with me. It's, the two weeks after that, that would be a problem for me.
So the, the last two weeks in June, we, we do have some pending new matters that we're going to have new hearings on. But if you're, are you out of the country or out of town?
Out of the country, yeah.
So then, you know, we have alternates and.
What about the beginning of June, you can't?
I'm, I'm, no, I'm okay with the beginning of June.
What works for you?
Oh, alternate, so for the other matter, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Not on this one.
Getting a little nervous there.
June 3rd is a Saturday.
Yeah, no, June 7th is Saturday.
Okay. So is everyone in favor of continuing the hearing until Wednesday, June 7th? Seven o'clock? Yeah, someone want to make, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, is there anything else? Well, hold on, is there anything else we should, while we're here, that we can accomplish about this? Or in terms of giving, if you have a specific question you want answered at the next hearing, I think now is a good time to, to-
It would be.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know how we should get it answered, get it answered, but, um, I would, I don't know, and I don't know if that's through the DPW, but what, how do we determine that, what the disruption causes the, the groundwater by, you know, you have to bring in fill and, and pouring a slab foundation. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think that would be a significant piece if he could answer, if it could be answered. Because I think it's a valid point to say, if you bring that in and it causes major disruptions to the neighborhood, uh, you know, maybe we haven't really done our job.
What effect, in fact, that this slab has? Is that what you're saying?
And the, 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 the construction of it.
Construction of the garage.
Like, I, I think, I think when you get to that steady state, I think we can, we can understand that the groundwater is what it is and the runoff is actually, in my opinion, is improved. But I think their concern is the period of the construction. What does that do?
We could, we could take and ask her to talk to Karen Gallagher and have Karen Gallagher give us a letter.
I, yeah, I think we want to get at least an opinion from Karen Gallagher, if not-
Or have her come to a meeting.
Yeah, uh, Karen will ask her to come to the meeting.
Right.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
That'll work.
I move that we continue the, we're still in public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public hearing for Five Hillside until June seventh at seven PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The other recommendation is that Karen is going to notify Karen Gallagher before-
Yes. Okay, I think, let's have, uh, we have a ten-minute recess that'll permit people from this hearing to leave before we can get the next hearing going. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Hey, I agree.
Want to make a motion?
I move that we take a ten-minute re- recess before beginning of the next hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the continued hearing on Park Central's appeal from the planning board's denial of site plan review. And, um, we've had tons of continuances and originally, um, Lee sat on the matter. And, um, that raised a vacancy on the board. And, um, I made the, the decision to appoint Debbie. And I know that there was a, um, whole discussion about this at the selectmen. So I just want to, uh, this is not an issue that's up for debate, but I wanted to, I think you at least are, you know, deserve a, some explanation of my, you know, thought process on this. And it's simply that, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Simply that, um, Debbie had, had been to the meeting at which we had a substantive discussion about this. And I think that administratively, it made sense for her to, um, continue to participate. And also, one of the things I considered was that, um, one of the things that you're asking for, I think, is for the ZBA to do the site plan review. And really have no idea how long that would take. I know that, um, Debbie is already submitted, um, something to the board of selectmen to stay on for another term. So that was my thinking in terms of appointing her to sit on it. I know, Mr. Catanzaro, you've challenged her ability to sit on the matter, but it's something we've conferred with town council about and it's been referred to the state ethics commission. So I'm really relying on her, on her own, um, judgment in terms of whether she feels she can participate in the matter. So as I said, it's not something that we're going to discuss or debate, but since the board of selectmen at their hearing suggests that I explain the basis for why I did what I did, I thought I would let you know.
I would just like to make a brief comment. Uh, I also listened to the tape of the May second, uh, board of selectmen hearing. And I would just like to point out to you, because the way that I saw that hearing and I thought that a lot of the things that she stated were true, okay, and accurate, that she doesn't have a financial, uh, conflict of interest, that she's not financially impacted by this project as, uh, no one is in the project, that's our feeling. So the analysis to whether she's aggrieved or not aggrieved is not relevant. But your own regulations say that if there's substantial conflict of interest pertaining to the subject matter of a particular case, that's this zoning board's own rules. And she has demonstrated a predetermination of this project. And in the letter that I sent to the board, to this, to the board of selectmen, to you, okay, to her, asking her to disqualify herself chronolize, you know, chronologically sets forth her opposition to this project. And, you know, um, that's it. If she, if you're not going to request her to step down, uh, she is not going to voluntarily step down. I believe it's tainting the whole proceeding. Why would someone who has such an interest try so hard to stay on this board, on this panel, when there are other alternates that could sit in? But with that said, if that's your decision, uh, just note our objection and what we say.
Your, your objections noted and as, it's not something that's up for debate. So, um, there's a lot of people here. We've already had a, um, pretty robust discussion of this issue, um, at the first hearing. And I think that before we-
Chairman, I just called my-
No, no, no. Um, I think that I first want to hear from, uh, each of the board members about basically how you feel preliminarily on this appeal, what information you're looking for, because I think that rather than begin another round where we have presentation by the applicant from, uh, Mr. Brackett and a lot of public comment, let's just see how far along we are and what, what you actually want to hear. So, I mean, the issues were whether it's, this has been constructively approved or not. And then, um, you know, whether the planning board had a, had a good basis to deny site plan review. And then if you feel they didn't, should it go back to the planning board? Or should we do the site plan review? Which I think is what the applicant's-
A point of order, Mr. Chairman, that also the last time we administratively dealt with the, uh, other appeal, that's before the board tonight, of the building inspectors-
You're right.
Okay. And I, and I really believe that they administratively can be held, dealt with together because the decision of one is the same decision as with the other, but-
So Debbie, what's your feeling?
Can, can I ask a question about the date on the appeal of the building inspector's, um, failure to, um, issue a decision?
Well, that's really the, the other matter we've got.
Because I, I don't see that the, the appeal, I'm, I've got a lot of documents here, but I believe that document is dated Jan- January tenth, two thousand seventeen. And according to our bylaws, um, an appeal under, uh, this is Mass. General Law forty, section fifteen, an appeal under section eight to a permit granting authority shall be taken within thirty days from the date of order or decision which is being appealed. Um, so I don't think this falls within the thirty days, but I'd like somebody to confirm that. If, if, if the, if, if it's, um, I'm not sure what it's tied to, to be honest. If, if it's linking back to the planning board decision, it's outside the thirty days. So I'd like some clarification on, on that.
Chairman, can I respond?
Sure.
Did, we requested on November eighteenth, a, we made a request for enforcement of the zoning bylaw. The building inspector never responded, okay? Uh, and, uh, we appealed, and unfortunately, I don't have my stamped copy of when I filed that appeal.
We've got, it's, our agenda says it was, um, this appeal that we're handling right now was, was-
Yeah, the appeal of the building inspector's refusal.
Oh. Yeah, so that's, let's, I think it makes a lot of sense to handle that-
Separately?
Separately.
Okay.
So, uh, this appeal was filed on October twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, which is-
That I have stamped. Copy of, yes.
Yeah, that is within, um, thirty days of the September twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen vote where the planning board denied type plan.
And that was the quandary that I was, because I never had, got a decision.
So Debbie, the, the question you're raising really does not have to do with the matter we're handling right now.
Okay, so I thought we could, might be able to get rid of the other matter if it didn't qualify for an appeal. That's all.
Okay, because we, we've intentionally scheduled these things so that each time we put this on for seven o'clock and we put the next one on at seven oh five, and immediately after we do this, we'll do the next one. I view them as actually very different, but-
Okay. Okay, um, so we just talked about, um, the date on the appeal of the planning board's, um, uh, decision, um, as being thirty days from the, the date that the planning board, um, took their vote. So I just want to read, um, our bylaw, uh, one seventy-four, ten F. The planning board shall act on an application for site plan approval and shall notify in writing. So several times throughout the documents, I've seen that the planning board failed to notify the applicant in writing. Um, but my interpretation of this is that there are, there are two parts to this. The planning board shall act and the plan, the planning board shall notify in writing. Um, so my, um, my question is if, I think, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So my, my question is if the, um, so I sat in the room actually at, at the planning board meeting when they, when they took their vote. Um, and I think many of us in the room believed that the, the planning board acted by taking a vote, um, because they felt that they were put into a position where, um, they needed to make a decision because they had it only an additional day and there wasn't time to put, to post and have an additional, um, extension. They did not receive an extension. You did not grant them an extension. Um, so my, my question is, why did you put in an appeal at thirty days if you didn't consider the vote, uh, that the planning board took on, I think it was September twenty-ninth, and action?
Because I waited because I was promised a decision. And we did not, and if you were there that night, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, back on the nineteenth of September, and this is all well documented in public record, they requested an extension to the thirtieth because they were going to reach a decision on the nineteenth. And then on the nineteenth, they requested another here, extension till the twenty-sixth because they were going to need time to write a decision. And if we go through what was said at many of the hearings, one of the important things was, was to write a decision. Well, on that Thursday night at ten or eleven o'clock, okay, and I knew the next day was the thirtieth, I told them, listen, get us the decision early next week, which was what I was promised, okay? Then I won't make an, you know, it is what it is. Uh, you know, they were supposed to do it by the thirtieth. I did not grant another written extension beyond the thirtieth. The purpose of the extension for the thirtieth was for them to get a written decision. They could have done a lot of things, okay? They could have written a one-page decision, rejected, sent it to the board of selectmen, sent it to us, sent it to, uh, the building inspector and complied. You know, we're requested to comply with the strict terms of the bylaws, and this bylaw says that the failure to act and notify results in the approval of the plan. You know, and, and the fact that we gave them a little bit of grace, okay, shouldn't come back to penalize the applicant. Moreover, okay, I was on vacation for two weeks after that. Moreover, okay, I was on vacation for two weeks after that, and almost on a regular basis, I communicated with the town planner, saying, where's your decision? Because we only had 30 days to file an appeal to this board under Section 15. And the statute, your regulation says that we have to file an appeal even if it's a failure to act. So, there's a little bit of a disjunctive here. It says that the plan is approved if they don't act and notify, but then it says, if we appeal, if we're going to appeal the failure to act, we have 30 days. So, 28 days later, which happened to be a Friday, I felt compelled to protect my client's interests by filing the appeal, even though I thought the plan was already constructively approved. And then, not for another three weeks, did we even get a written decision. So, I mean, that's the facts of what occurred.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one point of order, please?
No, no.
Okay. That's what occurred.
Can I ask you another question? My question, I think, is a legal question, maybe, to Aldo, is what does it mean to act? Because I think for anybody who sat in the room, there was, you know, the public hearing was posted, they deliberated, there was an event where Mr. DePietre walked out, they discussed then, what are the options, whether to take a vote, or whether it gets actually brought to the zoning board of appeals. And there was not an extension granted. And so, my question is, did they not act because they took a vote? Is that not an act?
Administratively and ministerially, for a government board to act is to evaluate, deliberate, go to a vote, and enter the vote. That is acting in an administrative capacity.
Okay. And what about an electronic record? So, I was looking back at the bylaws when we, when this 174, sorry, I don't know these numbers, was written into our bylaws. Anyway, they go back to the 80s and 90s, where the applicant needs to be notified in writing. And I think this is one of the things the applicant has picked up, is that they sort of putting more emphasis on the fact that they weren't notified in writing within a particular period of time. Now, the law says that you should be notified in writing within 60 days, but that's of the original application. So, this had been an extension, and in fact, Andrew, you asked a question at the last hearing about whether or not the 60 days applies to an extension as well. And so, I'd like to hear about that as well. I mean, first, one has to do an electronic record. It's taped, people have access to it. It wasn't written right away. We know that. It was written sometime later. But does that mean that the board failed to act? That's my first question.
I don't think so. I think the board acted.
Okay. Thank you. And then, and so, my other question has to do with this 60-day period that the, is it not 60 days from the original application? What do you do when you have an extension, an extension of public hearings, et cetera? Are you still bound to that 60-day period?
Well, technically, the extensions are extensions to perform under the statutory procedure. I don't know. I wasn't there for those extensions. I presume they were intended to extend all the timelines.
Okay. So, as I was reading 174-10-F, "The planning board shall act on an application for site plan approval and shall notify in writing the applicant of the Board of Selectmen and the building inspector of his actions within 60 days of receipt of the application." So, the application is an early, a much earlier date. When you keep extending the hearings and extending the hearings, are you still bound to that 60 days? It's almost, almost becomes impossible. So, are you saying that, this is one thing that Andrew was asking last time, is there anything in our bylaws or in Mass. General Law that says that that 60 days still holds to any extension?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay. Because I think you were going to follow up on that one.
Because this is, none of this, the zoning act, Chapter 48, doesn't apply to any of this. So, we're in a, we just have to deal with our bylaw, that's it. If it's kind of vague, we just have to deal with it. And I'll just, my view on this is that holding that this is constructively approved is something to, you know, think very seriously, because it would mean that a site plan for one of the largest projects in the history of the town would be constructively approved. So, that's, you know, something serious to consider. And, you know, my own view is, I don't think it was constructively approved. I think it's really an issue about what to do next. I don't think, my view is, I don't think the planning board was right to deny site plan review, but I don't think that it was constructively approved.
And I think the chairman is right, that the zoning act in the statute makes no reference to site plan review or approval. The site plan review or approval concept, I think I've said before, has been recognized in case law, and normally is part of a special permit, but it's recognized as a procedure. Municipalities attempt to regulate that in a reasonable way, and I believe that the planning board, from everything I read, acted on the timeline. The other thing is that the counsel for the applicant, as astute as he is and wisely, took an appeal. So, it's almost that notice is somewhat academic, because there was an act of an administrative agency, and there was an appeal.
Andrew, I think, I think for the most part, I'm kind of with you. I think I stated in the last meeting that I found it very difficult to say this would be constructively approved, based on the events as they were documented. And I think one of the things that is probably not stated clearly, that sort of, a lot of it hinges on, is what does it mean to notify in writing? I mean, it seems the applicants were clearly notified. I mean, I know we talk a lot about what is in there, chapter and verse for what the days are, but it does seem that there was notification. If it wasn't in the form of a certified letter, I just, I don't, I haven't seen anywhere where it says it has to be a certified letter.
So, you know, the issues are, whether the, in addition to the constructive approval, you know, do you think that the planning board was right to deny site plan review?
I think they, I think they have a case that they didn't act in an, you know, efficient manner. So, I don't think that was right.
So, then, the next thing is, the options would be, we could, Park Central is asking, I think, us to do it, right? And I think that they've argued, we have the ability to do it. I don't think this has ever happened before. I think we technically do have the ability to do it, but another option is that we can send it back to the planning board, which the bylaw says that the planning board does the site plan review typically. So, do you have a feeling on that, or questions on that?
Yeah. I mean, my feeling is if it needs site plan review, it should go back to the planning board, because that's something that's clearly within the purview of the planning board.
I agree. I just, maybe, Mr. Morris or somebody wants to speak to it, but during that planning board meeting, they cited Prudential Insurance versus Board of Appeals of Westwood in terms of their responsibility to impose reasonable terms and conditions, and they felt that that's what they were meant to do. They also discussed not having enough time, basically, to do it, and requested an extension. So, one of the questions I had was whether or not this could go back to the planning board. So, obviously, the Conservation Committee got an extension. I don't know why the planning board didn't get an extension, but I don't know that it's too late. Is it too late?
No. Remember now, I'm guiding you legally. You have to make the decision. I'm just giving you the law around the edges. Administrative remand is a permissible option to the zoning board in this particular case. The chairman's other point is well taken. Technically, maybe it could be construed that on appeal, the ZBA has to take on the role of the planning board in scrutinizing an engineered plan, technically. But respectfully, I don't think you have the ability to do that as a zoning board of appeals. The planning board has the ability. If I recall what the issues were, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it was a time issue, but it was also insufficient time, insufficient detail as to the plan. Now, that's what I recall. So, if in fact that was the case, any administrative agency says, decision has to be made now, whatever, bottom line is, if you're asking us to make a decision now, denied. So, if that was the case, and what you're considering is an administrative remand to the planning board, and that is a permissible situation. Because quite frankly, if it went to a court of law, one of the options to the reviewing court would be remand with instructions. So, in that particular case, it would occur judicially. So, if you consider remand, just make sure you do it with specific instructions.
Yeah. So, I'm kind of, I'm kind of all over the map on this. So, I, you know, I do feel, well, it's a broad statement, but based on what's presented, that, you know, that there was constructive approval. I also feel that, that the planning board is the better board to be reviewing a site plan, as opposed to us, that's more of what they do, less of what we do. However, I mean, I am comfortable, you know, reviewing a site plan if we need to. You know, I'm kind of curious on your thoughts or directions also, because...
I think that, you know, a large, the ZBA did a site plan review as part of the 40B that you sat on. But the two other people that were sat on that are not on this. So, all four other people need to get up to speed on it.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I'm comfortable with it, but I've been sitting on this for a while.
I'm still making up my mind, but... Greg, what do you think?
I'm against the idea of constructive approval. I think it's a technicality that I don't really think gets met. I, I don't think, you know, I kind of have some questions. I don't know if that's, this is the point for it, kind of the straw vote concept, but, you know, I kind of have some questions as to where things really sat between the planning board and Capital Group, in terms of the differences of opinion that led to no more extensions and everything else. You know, Concom's getting ready to have their vote with the conditions. You know, I'm interested to understand exactly how that impacts the plan that was approved as part of the 40B, 40A special permit. You know, what are the changes? How those impact kind of the areas that are specifically called out in Attorney Catanzaro's letter, in terms of parks and streets and dimensions and lighting? What the planning board still really wants to review beyond that? And, you know, where things really sit, to understand who's best to look at this further? That's where I'm sitting.
So, on the issue of where Concom is and the other boards, can you speak to that? And also, if you want to comment on...
Yeah, I'd like to come on, comment briefly. I mean, what occurred in this particular site plan review process was that back in August 15th, we gave the final site plan to the planning board for the first time, okay? And the planning board, they had had plans, however, progressive plans, okay? So, this may have been 10%, more than the plan that they had previously, with a process that started in early June. On August 15th, we were told that the planning board could not get to reviewing our plan at all, because no one was available to meet for the rest of August or September. And then, lo and behold, the planning board holds three meetings, okay, for the purpose of figuring out a way to appeal the comprehensive permit. So, rather than doing their job, okay, of doing site plan review, they go forward and they spend this time, and a lot of time, and that litigation is still pending, which is another reason why I don't really want to go back to the planning board, okay? And in that time, they didn't do their job. Now, in the materials that I provided to you, okay, I pointed out that this site plan was vetted by the zoning board, okay, and the planning board through the same consultants. I mean, Fuss and O'Neil went through this entire site plan. As it pertains to the Conservation Commission, they voted the other night to deny an order of conditions. And there, but all along, one of the topics that was with the planning board, and a condition that we always knew, was that any site plan approval was going to be conditioned upon a conservation order of conditions. And if that order of conditions implicated the site plan, okay, well, then, we would have to go back to the planning board. We knew that, and we proposed that as a, we proposed that as an option. This planning board did not want to rule on this site plan. They wanted to reject this site plan, and they wanted to drag it out. And if you remand us to us, that's what we're going to go through again, unless you have some specific instructions. Now, one of the things that, the reason that this was advanced the way it was, was because of the very language in the variance that this board granted, in a decision that met with Town Council's approval, and in the comprehensive permit in a decision that met with Town Council's approval, which limited the jurisdiction of the planning board. We've played by those rules, okay? We've done what we, we've done what this board has directed, okay? And now, we're forced here to say, okay, our bylaw that pertains to site plan approval really doesn't mean what it says. It's interesting that it's one of the only bylaws that provides for an automatic approval. And that's to get away from the problem of planning boards dragging their feet. And of course, the extension applies to the, there was a reason that Mr. Morris made me put it in writing, that the time for action, the time for the decision, as is written in the form, was until September 30th. We only continued the public hearing to the 29th. If it was only to continue it to act, well, then, you would have done it on the 29th, because that's when they acted, okay? Didn't do anything on the 30th. And so, you know, I'm hearing the quandary that this board is in, and I do think that you're qualified to go through this process. And I do believe that when you look at what is left of the process, it's only the four residual areas of site plan. And that's what this planning board, that's what this zoning board had already ordered, and everything else was vetted before this board. I know that only Mr. Dripanos was the only member of that board that sat on it, but I have just as much faith in this board as I do the planning board, because you're going to do the same thing that they do. You're going to get peer review, and you're going to make a decision based on what, on the information that you presented. So, our druthers would be that you constructively approve, but I can hear what you're saying, or that you just take on the task of completing the site plan review at this level.
So, I mean, my general feeling is that, as I said, I don't think it was constructively approved. And the issue with us doing the site plan review would be, it would take a lot of time. We would have more and more very contentious hearings. The ZBA has had the Park Central matter for the entire time that I've lived in the town of Southborough, I think it's three, four years. And I think, once we take that on, we're looking at potentially, I mean, I've never done it before. I would need to be brought up to speed, listen to all the engineers go, I mean, the plans are thick. So, I'm inclined to send it back to the planning board, but I think Mr. Catanzaro makes some good points about, you know, I don't, we don't want to play a game of ping pong where we send it back to them, and there's the same type of thing that happens, and then there's yet another appeal back to us. You know, are we going to be in the same position eight months from now? Because I know that, I mean, one of the, a simple condition that we could have, or an instruction, is do the site plan review, and we just take the language out of the use variance. It's subject to residual site plan review for all categories not covered by board's site plan approval under the use variance site plan approval, namely, lighting, landscaping, parking, and sidewalks, and any other applicable categories per the above referenced section. I don't know what that means. I think maybe when this was crafted, it was to, you know, give you a little bit of leeway if there were some other, you know, issues that could be dealt with practically, but I'm just thinking practically. You know, I hope that, it makes sense to send it back to the planning board, but I really hope that it's a productive exercise. And I think that what... And I think that what went on in September, you know, had a lot of problems. And I think that the point that Mr. Catanzaro made about the, you know, the time that was taken in early September to go into executive session to plan the lawsuit against our board and the applicant, I mean, I don't want to go, that opens up, there's so many bad feelings about that, I don't want to open that all up again. But I just think that, I'm inclined to send it back to the planning board, but I just hope that it's a more productive exercise that's just focused on the use variance criteria. I mean, even if you, I think now that you do have the ability to have assistance of town council, Mr. Morris, the things you were saying at the last hearing about, you know, what if the CONCOM, something as a result of the CONCOM changed the plans or changed the location of the roads, you know, you wanted to see that beforehand. You know, I've been following the CONCOM to see if maybe that would get to a point where it would resolve things so that you would have the information that you wanted, but now I understand the CONCOM situation is a little more complicated, but, so that's basically where I think this should go, is no constructive approval, and to send it back to the planning board with some type of, you know, instructions.
Part of the, whatever, I'm not saying that I'm necessarily in favor of that, but I would, what you were saying with stipulations or with instructions, I think a timing instruction needs to be implemented too. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's just open-ended and it continues.
And I've thought of that, but I guess it's a question for the applicant and also Mr. Morris, Mr. Brackett. You know, how is this, I need to be educated a little bit, for some, a project this big, how does the order of approvals ordinarily work? Because I think Mr. Morris is saying, we want the final, final, final plans before we do the site plan review. How is it, I mean, because I think the thing that you were suggesting at the planning board hearing is approve the site plan with conditions, and one of the conditions is if there's any change as a result of the, any change to the plans as a result of a CONCOM action, then you go back to the planning board for a modification. And just in the decision that you made, Paul, on the 40B, there is, Lee made this comment at the last hearing, he's correct, that the 40B says that if there's a CONCOM decision and that alters the plans, you come back to the ZBA for a modification of the site plan or something like that.
The Conservation Trust...
I could speak, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Andrew, I mean, I don't know if Mr. Morris is in...
Been there for a while.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Good evening. Don Morris, Planning Board. It seems like the majority of what I'm hearing is to send it back to the planning board. Send "it" back to the planning board. What's the "it"? The "it" is, as far as I know, a set of plans dated August 15th, 2016. When the planning board opened the site plan hearing, the plans before us were dated October of 2015, October 27th, 2015. So those plans were about eight months old when we opened the site plan hearing. When we opened the site plan hearing, as you said, you've tried to stay tuned in to the Conservation issues, and the planning board does the same thing. We huddle with each of the different departments that are involved, Board of Health, DPW, and Conservation. And as early as April, before the planning board opened the site plan hearing, the Conservation Commission indicated that there were problems, serious problems with the plan. And this was continued through June and letters into August in their meeting minutes. The commission is still waiting for a great deal of information to be provided. That was the August 31st, 2016 Conservation Commission meeting minutes. September 26th, Fussin O'Neill, the consultant, stated, "The revised plans show wetlands being used for stormwater management." Quote, "This practice is not allowed." The September 27th, 2016 Conservation Commission meeting minutes stated that, quote, "Between 30 and 40 comments remain that have not been addressed," and that, quote, "Mr. De Petri asked for a continuance to the October 27th, 2016 meeting." So throughout the site plan process, from the beginning of it, right till the end, we had information, solid public information from the Conservation Commission, that there were serious problems with the plan and that they needed to be addressed. So I think one of you members earlier said that you felt that the action of the planning board to reject the plan wasn't appropriate. So there's only two other things, three other things. One is to do nothing, and then it would be constructively approved. Another one would be to approve it with no conditions, or approve it with conditions. How can you approve a plan that is clearly stated by another authority, a plan that cannot be built? And that was the situation the planning board was in. So in late September, the planning board, and you can listen to the tapes on it, we were hoping that the issues with the Conservation Commission would get resolved. A revised set of plans that actually could be built would be submitted, and we would continue with that set of plans through the site plan process. Of course, that never happened. And to this day, a revised set of plans has not been submitted. As recently as last week, when I sat with the Conservation agent, the feedback was that their last meeting went nowhere and that the commission is going to be in a position to reject the plan. So again, if you say that you, and I agree that the site plan should be within the planning board's jurisdiction, and the site plan should be performed by the planning board, but not a site plan that can't be built.
What do you mean, the site plan that can't be built? Because it hasn't been approved by the Conservation Commission, or?
You were saying like Conservation...
If you, if you got into the details of the problems with the plan, one of the most significant issues is that wetlands are being used for stormwater management, and that's a violation of the Wetlands Protection Act.
Mr. Chairman.
So that would, if you, if you have an understanding of engineering plans, you would know that due to the density of this project, it would require additional wetland structures to offset what is being used, what, offset the wetlands that are being used. Because there's no room on the site, the site is completely, fully dense, it would most likely involve revising the number of units, the location of units, revising the layout of the street, revising sidewalks, landscaping, parking, utilities, drainage. So it makes, it made no sense, and it still makes no sense, to take the current plan and work with it since the Conservation Commission has determined that it cannot be built. Now, we would hope, and this is, I guess is where I'll leave it. First of all, a site plan is the final plan. It's not a concept plan. It's the final designed plan for all utilities, all infrastructure, building location, street location, everything. That's what the planning board approves in a site plan. This is a massive project. Regardless of the size, you still have to have the final engineered plans. You can't say, well, this is kind of the road layout, or this is pretty much where the buildings are going to go. It doesn't work that way. Site plan is the final designed plan. We don't have that. Unless Conservation changes their mind, which I don't think they will, according to what I've been told, then this plan has to be revised. And so therefore, to remand this plan back to the planning board, I think you're going to wind up with the same situation, where the planning board would either approve a plan that can't be built or be forced to reject it again. So I would strongly suggest, respectfully, that know, that you do remand it back to the planning board, but the "it" would have to be a...
To send it back to you if you already think that it's a plan that can't be built? So the same results...
No, that's, that's the condition, that once the final design is acceptable to Conservation and the other agencies, like Board of Health and DPW, then we start a site plan, a formal site plan process with the revised buildable plan.
Mr. Chairman, respectively, Ms. Morris is wrong. This is the issue we've had all along. We didn't spend $300,000 on concept plans, as he so states. And within the planning board's own bylaws, nowhere does it state, you must obtain Conservation approval before you come to us. Nowhere does it state...
How does it ordinarily work?
You go to all the boards, just like we came before, the zoning board. They vote on what's, what's before them, not what they think they heard from other boards or what they think personally. What the plan is before them is what they're voting on, subject to the approval of the other boards. If it gets changed at another board, we have to come back to the planning board, have to come back to the ZBA. Now, yes, the Conservation denied us, we're at odds as to whether we can use those existing detention basins or not. We feel that we can. We've got information from the state that we can. Conservation does not agree with us, so we're going to end up at DEP. And there's a good chance that the plan could stay the way it is. Mr. Morris has no way of knowing that. He should be looking at what's before him and only what's before him. He's taking his opinion.
It's not my opinion, it's a fact.
Yes, it is your opinion. No, it's not fact, Mr. Morris. Okay? DEP has not ruled on it yet. Just because the Conservation's consultant feels it's not allowed, we disagree.
Okay.
Well, the way the town government works is we're supposed to work together. And if you're asking the planning board to approve a plan that we're specifically told by another commission that it can't be built, that doesn't seem to make any sense. Why would we do that?
I think at this point, why don't we open up for some public comment? And Mr. Brackett?
Mr. Chairman.
Two things. One, you've got to speak at the mic. And two, I would like to hear who you represent, because I'm not sure you told us at the last hearing. I mean, I'm presuming you represent at least one person in the town. You don't live in Southborough, right?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
But do you, I assume you represent at least one person who lives in Southborough, right?
Yes.
Who do you represent?
I represent the group of signatories that filed a petition to the Board of Selectmen, and I appeared before the Board of Selectmen on December 6th regarding all of the procedural irregularities that have occurred regarding the Park Central project, including this process involving site plans. So there's a list of...
That's not my understanding, but...
I'm sorry?
That's not my understanding.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, an issue was raised recently, apparently regarding...
Can you at least tell us the name of one person in the town of Southborough you represent? Just one person.
I don't have the list with me, Mr. Chairman. I think I've already advised you that I represent the 170 petitions.
How, do you have an agreement with them, or?
All 170?
Yeah.
I've been authorized, Mr. Chairman, am I answering one question at a time?
Yeah.
How's it going?
I think the board may know that I appeared before the Board of Selectmen on December 6th. I was there on December 19th. I was there again on April 3rd, all in relation to the petition signed by 170 people seeking the removal of Mr. Baralini.
How did those people authorize you to represent them in this proceeding?
May I finish the point, Mr. Chairman? Seeking the removal of Mr. Baralini for eight charges, including irregularities involving the application and approval for the Park Central project. Now, if you need that list, I'll be happy to provide you with that list. Had I known that before tonight, I would have brought the list with me. In my letter to you, Mr. Chairman, of April 10th, I specifically state that I represent those 170 people. I've received no correspondence regarding documentation since that date.
Have any of the people who signed that came to you and said, no, you don't represent me in, in, in other matters, in this matter?
The only person of the 170 who's contacted me, whose name does not need to be revealed tonight, indicated that that individual had not authorized me to file the complaint against Selectmen Faniff and Rooney regarding conflict of interest for their participation on the August 2nd, 2016 meeting. One person only relating conflict. No one has contacted me to say that I'm not authorized to represent them tonight.
So you, I can just go and start hearing and meetings and saying, I represent this group of people that signed this petition? Or was there some process whereby those people authorized you to? I mean, we're not at that Lee Baralini removal stage now. We're about this hearing, that those people authorized you to represent them here.
Mr. Chairman, I appeared before you on January 18th in the same capacity, and I spoke that evening, and my comments are recorded in the minutes. So frankly, I'm surprised to understand that the question between January 18th and tonight, almost four months later, is just being brought up for the first time.
Actually, I think it was, it was asked, and it was not answered on, at that meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you want copies of the document...
It gets to a point where it is arguably, you know, how relevant it is, because I do assume you represent at least one person that's in the town of Southborough.
I can tell you, I mean, in any other proceeding, you disclose who you represent. I have the list, and what troubles me is that a member of the board is on the list. And, you know, and I know that she said that she never authorized the filing of the complaints, the ethic complaints against the commissioners, but here we have a board member and her attorney...
Well, I do think that is, Debbie, do you want to speak to that? I mean, does, does he represent you? Or has he ever represented you?
I don't think I'm on trial tonight. I think that you've already discussed this. I actually don't think it needs to be discussed anymore. I made it very clear, I signed the petition against Mr. Baralini. He's here for a different matter. That's all I really want to say.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can address the issue regarding the planning board's role. In the defense of the planning board, Chapter 174, Section 10, authorizes the planning board to reject site review plans that are incomplete. But my review of the minutes and the plans indicates that the planning board, acting in good faith at the very beginning, accepted these plans when they were incomplete to begin with. So rather than rejecting them, they accepted them. But when you look at this matter, Mr. Chairman, you've had, you've had four regulatory procedures involved. The comprehensive permit on the use variance before the zoning board, the wetlands application before the CONCOM, and site plan approval before the planning board. Now, the applicant chose to file parallel applications and pursue parallel hearings before the CONCOM and the site plan. But apparently, the applicant hasn't satisfied either of those two regulatory bodies regarding the completeness of the plans. Now, if Mr. De Petri says he's going to DEP, well, then obviously, the status of those plans are in question. As Mr. Morris said, how can the planning board, number one, they've only been given a set of plans for four of the 21 conditions under 174-10? Now, Mr. Chairman, I understand there was a use variance that allegedly incorporated 16 categories of site plan approval. I would just say to you, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned in my letter to you, that's completely illegal. The zoning board and the use variance does not have the power to exercise site plan review under your bylaw. That's the jurisdiction of the planning board. A use variance under 48, Section 10, in your zoning bylaw, is limited to the use and the four criteria under Section 10. But the application to the planning board was not only incomplete as to the plans, it was incomplete in only addressing four categories on what's been apparently referred to as residual site plan approval. Mr. Chairman, there's no such thing as residual site plan approval. You either have full site plan application, full site plan approval, or you don't. And if it's not complete, under the Prudential versus Westwood case, the planning board can deny it because it's an incomplete application. You never get to the merits of the approval. So, Mr. Chairman, I think the planning board, frankly, Mr. Catanzaro is faulting them. They should be given credit for the fact that between March and September, they worked with the applicant to try to finalize the plans. And when they got to September, apparently they reached the point realizing they were not going to have a complete set of plans. And Mr. Catanzaro was pressing them for some kind of decision. Well, in my legal experience, Mr. Chairman, a planning board cannot grant site plan approval for four of 21 conditions. It's illegal nullity. It's ultra virus, beyond their authority. And, Mr. Chairman, while I'm here, if I can be heard briefly on the points raised by Mr. Catanzaro on the appeals. Mr. Chairman, in my letter of April 10th, I mentioned at the last meeting that you, at that meeting, stated you couldn't find any rule which provided for constructive approval of site plan. I agree with you. You've heard from at least two members tonight that they're not supportive of constructive approval. Well, Mr. Catanzaro's appeals in his own package to you, second paragraph, he says, "Central to both appeals is the issue of whether Park Central's site plan was constructively approved by the failure of the planning board to..." approved by the failure of the planning board to act pursuant to the zoning bylaw. Well, if you already have a majority of the members who don't agree that constructive approval is appropriate, that Mr. Chairman simply stated, your action should be to deny the two appeals. Because if you look at the notice of your hearing for tonight, published according to 48, Section 11, printed, posted in the town hall and the clerk's office, you only have two appeals regarding constructive approval. You do not, Mr. Chairman, have an appeal within 30 days from the November 17th, 2017, 2016 decision of the planning board. So, Mr. Chairman, you're considering a remand to the planning board. Number one, from a jurisdictional point of view, Mr. Catanzaro has agreed, these are both constructive approval cases. If you have a majority that don't agree with constructive approval, your decision is to deny the appeal. Over. No remand. And, Mr. Chairman, the final point I'll make is that without an appeal within 30 days of November 17th, 2016, you do not have the November 17th decision before you tonight to consider for a remand to the planning board. It's final. Thank you.
Was that ever filed in the town's clerk's office, that?
I believe it was. I actually received it on November 18th or 19th from the building inspector, not from the planning board, but we did receive it.
I mean, again, I just think of it practically, this appeal, the, the appeal form says, "Appeal." Planning board denial of site plan review. So before they filed that decision, they appealed the planning board to...
Because Section 15 says, "I have to file an appeal within 30 days of their action." What were we supposed to do? Sit there and wait till Christmas for them to write a decision?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is where we're mixing and matching.
No, we're not mixing and matching.
You, you just said it, Mr. Chairman, this appeal is under 174-25, not 48, Sections 8 and 15. But, Mr. Chairman, 174-25 tracks the language of 48, Sections 8 and 15. Under, eh, Section 8, an appeal from an order of decision of a body, the building inspector of the planning board, must be taken within 30 days under Section 15 by filing an appeal to the ZBA. You have no, in your notice of hearings tonight, Mr. Chairman, you have no appeal from the November 17th decision. So, Mr. Chairman, all these suggestions about whether a remand to the planning board is going to result in somehow it's going to be bad faith review by the planning board, or Mr. De Petri says he's going to go to DEP, there's no need for a remand. Mr. Chairman, the planning board decision is final. Site plan review has been denied. Therefore, they have to go back to square one and do it the right way, with an application with 21 categories addressing 174-10. And, Mr. Chairman, on this point, I'll just suggest, why don't they wait until they resolve the wetlands issue with the ConCom? Get everything squared away about what they can use and what they cannot use for this development. Then, if that's approved with no appeal to DEP by Mr. De Petri, or by a butters to DEP, then the planning board can work from a final set of site review plans. You've got comprehensive permit approval in place under appeal, you've got the use variance in place, but that's also being appealed, but you do have final decisions there. So rather than doing both at once, why not take a little bit of time and do it right by doing one at a time?
What do you say to that, Mr. De Petri, Mr. Catanzaro? I mean, should we just wait and see what happens with the DEP appeal or ConCom, and then all those issues are finalized, and then the site plan gets...
To you? To this board, or back to the planning board?
Either. I mean, I think he's saying there's, if there's, if there might be unresolved issues about the, the wetlands, and that might affect the plans, and then, you know, doesn't it make sense to have that cleared up?
I would like to confer with Mr. De Petri, but I would like to see this board make a decision tonight, okay? And, and, and I think I hear what the decision is going to be, and then we will weigh our options. If you remand to the planning board and they determine that they're not going to deal with the plan, well, we'll deal with that. If you vote that it's, well, first is, you vote that it wasn't constructively approved, deal with that. You vote that you're remanding it, we'll deal with that. We are appealing to the DEP, okay? And I, and I understand everything that Mr. Morris said and what Mr. Brackett said. But the, the issue tonight is, is that, once again, no one wants to read what you wrote, what you read a little earlier. This site plan review was limited to landscaping, lighting, okay, and two or three other categories, and I know there was a residual clause, but then presuppose that the zoning board didn't already vet and approve those things, which they did. And the documentation of which I gave you demonstrates that. So, I, I mean, I would really, I would rather that you make a decision, and then we'll decide how we're going to deal with your decision. If you remand it, we'll deal with it. Okay? And, again, for me to commit to waiting when I don't think it's necessary, because we believe that those plans are going to be the plans that are returned to somebody for a final site plan review.
I think the town council is calm, and then I think we should also hear from other interested parties.
A very valid point that's been made tonight is initially by the, the chairman of the planning board, that they need more detail. And it is clear, because I was at the Conservation Commission meeting, that the applicant's engineer said, "We believe we're at impasse." And the ConCom had hoped that there would be an ability to adjust the information submitted so that they could work more onto that. That's not happening. It is going to go to a DEP appeal. So what are you going to leave with the planning board? The remand concept is sensible if there are, if there's plans that are modified that they can consider, or in the very least, that there are conditions, and, and remand can have conditions, that it's subject to the submittal of the proper plans as finished before the, the Conservation Commission, or whatever other detail. And I keep hearing about the four areas and residual. The language at the end, reciting back to the bylaw, and I've said this several times, was recommended by this office, my office, and it was to ensure that the planning board had additional site plan review. I've said that many times, and I'll say that in the courts of the Commonwealth, wherever I have to go on that. And, and the chairman is aware of that. So, it's not preempted. At least from my viewpoint, it's not. But the key issue, the key issue for the, for the zoning board tonight is, if you choose remand, you've got to put reasonable conditions on that so that the planning board can act. And they told you that there is an incomplete plan, and the door has been shut on the Conservation Commission. So some of what Attorney Brackett says is sensible, based upon the fact this is just going to keep going around and end up in the courts of the Commonwealth, where it'll be decided in several different lawsuits. But for now, what do you do with the remand, and do you instruct the planning board with more detail?
Mr. Chairman, hearing what Attorney Cipriano had to say, I, I think an alternative might be, okay? Because even though we feel strongly that the plans that we presented on August 15th, and I am intimately familiar with the issue of the utilization of, of existing wetlands as stormwater facilities, those facilities were approved back in the 90s, and that's really the issue, whether or not something that was approved back in the 90s or the 80s could still be used. The Conservation Commission has taken the position that they cannot and should not, and we believe that the DEP is going to opine differently. But regardless of that, because who knows what they're going to do, one of the suggestions is, is that we continue this hearing until we get a determination from DEP. Then we return here, okay? And we'll know whether or not our plans are being changed. And I have no problem with extending, okay? I mean, we probably need to do at least a 90 or 120-day extension and leave it at the status quo, because, I mean, I guess the big impasse is, is you got incomplete plans, you got complete plans? Well, we could, you're right, we could fix it. But I don't want to, I don't, I would prefer not to be forced back to a planning board, okay, where I'm going to hear that again. So, let's get the complete plans, and then let this board decide what you want to do with it.
You're, you're not taking up, I think, other, other people who, here, who would like to speak.
I'm happy to defer to that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. Luttrell, do you want to speak?
Yes, Mimi Luttrell, a member of the planning board. I just wanted to bring your attention to our bylaw for the site plan, 174-D1, that says the site plan approval shall be granted upon the determination by the planning board that the following are complied with. And one of those things is stormwater and drainage, which is the issue with the Com, with the ConCom, which the ConCom did not believe those were complied with. So I think it was well within our jurisdiction to want plans that complied with those things, which we could only get from the ConCom.
Hi, Howard Rose, Tubantry Road. I'm not, as technical, I know all the laws and everything, I just want to remind people, if you were at that meeting, of why we're here today. And it's because when the planning board asked for more time and a complete set of plans, the developer threw a tantrum and threw out and walked out and gave them no other reason. He didn't give them the, the ability to extend, he gave them no choice to do it. He threw a tantrum and walked out. And now he's in here asking the proverbial parents to reward him for throwing a tantrum. I ask you to do the right thing. Send this back to the planning board, who stated many, many times that they were more than willing to do this, they just didn't have the sufficient work to do their job. Please send it back to the people who are supposed to do this job. Don't reward this outburst. We're supposed to be respectful and work it. He just walked out of the room. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just also want to remind you that please be respectful in your remarks before the board, and not refrain from personal attacks.
Karen Schimpkes, Limbrook Road. I'm, just want to express a, a quick comment and then a couple of observations. I'm very disappointed in characterizations like the one you just made to our resident here, because expressing opposing opinion is, is just a foundation of democracy.
I agree.
I also would ask that you respect all attorneys in the room, including town council and, and others, everyone here, because everyone has something valuable to add to the discussion. I think you need to see the forest through the trees and back up. There's been a horrible rat's nest of municipal law violations that the residents, the citizens, the taxpayers have had to unravel at their own expense. I sat with probably the top expert in the state, maybe in the country, on 40Bs and 40As, and here's what he had to say, that Southborough doesn't get to rewrite Mass General Law. The use variance expired as a matter of law. Expired as a matter of law, probably three months before the con permit decision was issued. I wrote you a letter right before, warning you of that, and was ignored. So here we are, tonight. So backing up, you know, forest through the trees here, the use variance has expired. The backwards nature of these approvals, disgusting and a disgrace to the town of Southborough. Horse trading is illegal. A use variance granted before the con permit? Are you kidding me? The safety issues, utterly ignoring the town. September of 2016, 150 people showed up for a safety forum. Were you there? Did you listen? MassDOT is not allowing, as far, allegedly, as far as I know, there's no access off Route 9, except limited. So how is it safer to send thousands of traffic trips down scenic country roads that accommodate one car at a time at spots? How is that safer than using Route 9? The use variance itself directs the proponent back to MassDOT. This is a disgusting, expensive, stupid process that's been backwards. We expect you to follow Mass General Law. We expect you to, to apply...
Can you please not yell at us? Please, just be calm.
Well, you know, if I haven't spent thousands and thousands of dollars on attorneys unraveling this mess, okay, then you probably would, would not be hearing this frustration. You've got a room full of people who have been fighting really frivolousness. Frivolousness. Unfairly. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Green was in line before you.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a word, please? I'm just a citizen, I'm not taking sides.
Yes, who, who are you?
I'm on the advisory committee.
Who are you?
My name's Adrian Peters, I live on Leachville Road. I do want to say something, and that is that you have a very difficult job as a chairman. But the camera's on, and I really, you're the only one on the committee who smirk, pull your face, sit back, drop your eyes, and I'm just asking you as a chairman, that you're acting on town, that you don't have an easy job. But please, pay respect to everybody. Don't pull your face, smirk, sit back. It's embarrassing.
Well, if I did that, I don't mean any, I can tell you, I have not meant any sign of disrespect to anyone, and I agree with you. It is a difficult job, and I, I, if I was doing that, I don't mean to, I mean it in, in, in any way.
John Green, Tent Tower Road, I, I was actually going to comment on the same thing, so I appreciate you saying that, because Mrs. Schimpkes has spent more time than probably anybody up here on this board, researching, viewing, tape, everything legal, all of the no quorums, the use variances. I mean, I can't tell you how many things have gone wrong in this project. I realize that this board is, is relatively new to it. I think that this is the time to hit the reset button. Mr. De Petri has tried to do this backwards, right? We've tried to get approvals, and we've gotten use variances at 11 o'clock at night with nothing in them. We have gone back and put in language that even the six people that supposedly agreed to the use variance didn't even know was going into the use variance. The overall comprehensive permit had addendums that weren't provided to us, so when you asked Mr. Brackett here who represented him on one of those addendums, it actually had anybody that gave a dollar to Dan Hill, saying that they, that he represented them as part of that overall comprehensive permit. Completely wrong. All these things are an absolute shame on the town of Southborough, and I think you should be looking to make these things right, every single one of you. I don't think you should be looking at Mr. De Petri. I don't think that, you know, relationships within these rooms should make a difference. I realize that he has done a lot of great things for this town, and I realize that he's probably one of the biggest taxpayers in this town. That shouldn't mean anything. It means absolutely nothing. Conservation Commission's at an impasse with this. Absolutely, the planning board never had a, a complete set of plans. My family developed property in Southborough. If we ever walked in here without a complete set of plans and asked the planning board to approve it, what, what would happen, right? Everybody should be treated the same way. If you set this precedence for him, you set the precedence for everybody. So if I come in here and I say, "I want this plan approved, even though it's not done," and I'm going to go force the issue, then I, I, I should have a special treatment all of a sudden? No, absolutely not. There's no special treatment when it comes to this stuff. Biggest project in town, raises our population by 10%, you need to do the right thing. It's time to do the right thing. The site plan is going to drastically change. The planning board needs a complete plan. They need to review 21 out of the 21 things that happened. The use variance, honestly, is not even valid, right? You, you can't override Mass Law. Thing's good for a year. They never even, they never even tried to extend it the next six months. So, I know their attorney's going to fight standing, right? Because they can't, they can't fight that it's actually real, right? They're going to sit there and fight standing all day long, because it's, it's gone. Start over. Do the right thing. Put this back in planning board where, where it belongs. Why is he fighting so hard to have you review it, when you don't normally review it? Does that make sense to you? Or is something wrong? Something stink? Thank you.
So, is there kind of a consensus here about remanding it back to the planning board? Because if so, then we could talk about what, if any, conditions that we would have on it. Is there?
I'd like to make one comment first.
Yes.
It's not related to that at all. I, I, I don't feel that that was an accurate depiction of your character in, in any way, shape, or form. I, as a, as a chairman, I, I don't think either comments were, were, were appropriate or necessary. I, I don't feel as...
I appreciate that, but I, I...
Extensions, like you said.
I'm happy to talk to you about this after the hearing, because I don't want to give that impression.
I'm just saying, I, I think our chairman is a very fair and impartial person, and I, and I don't, I don't feel that that's, that's an accurate description of his character. That's just my...
I did not attack his character, sir. I merely indicated, merely indicated that he was smirking, rolling his eyes...
smirking, rolling his eyes, pulling his face. I did not get into his character. And it doesn't, does not belong as chairman. And that's what I said. I appealed to him nicely. Not to do it. I did not get into his character.
So I thought we were going to, the question before us is, is there a kind of a consensus to send it back to the planning board? Because if there is, then we can begin talking about what conditions there would be, trying to move the discussion along towards a vote.
Can I ask a question again? So I think you made a statement that one of the options, you know, that may be more practical would be to get a decision?
No, it was a thought that, yeah, we would get a decision from DEP to see if the plan was going to change, okay? And again, it's because I, you know, and it's well-known, you know, we have a discomfort level with returning to a planning board under the current circumstances. However, I mean, at some point, that may be a reality, and if that's the ultimate reality, that's what it is. But what if we get a plan that isn't changed? That's going to make what your remand, it's going to affect your remand. If you remand it tonight, okay, we heard what Mr. Morris is going to do. He's going to tell us he has an incomplete plan. Okay? So why remand it tonight? Continue this. Let's get a DEP plan. Bring it before you, and then make your decision on that basis. Or if you want to remand it tonight, then you remand it tonight. And then you put us back in that quandary, okay, where we all know, everyone in the room knows what the result is going to be, because he told you. They weren't going to. Now, the only advantage from our point of view is if one of the conditions that you put in a remand is that they abide by the use variance, which this board has ruled, okay, in fact, didn't lapse, okay? And it's under appeal. The Schimpkes and Mr. Green have appealed that decision, and it's still pending. But this board has ruled that the variance hasn't lapsed. And so, you know, again, we're at a loss also, and, you know, we're really going to take, whatever happens tonight, we'll react.
Because whatever happens, there's going to be appeal from somebody, and we're just trying to narrow the issues so that we don't just have this game of ping pong between this board and that board and that board, and it goes on years and years. If we can just decide some issues so that they're at least teed up to be appealed.
And what I'm saying about keeping it here is possibly obviating appeal, because let's just say that attorney bracket is correct, that this plan is materially changed. Well, it is. I mean, if it's materially changed by DEP, okay, if we don't get those findings that we think we're going to get, well, they win. Okay? But, you know, keep it here. Find that out.
Sir, do you want to-
Oh, yes. Thank you. Matt Brownell, H. Jacobs Lane. I attended the Concom meeting last week, and I'm probably the farthest thing from an environmental expert, but I did learn a lot. And during this meeting, they had expressed, well, I think they were unanimous in their reservation, strong reservations against Park Central for several accounts, including, as was mentioned before, stormwater discharge going into wetlands, vernal pools. They had commentary from a gentleman who I believe had a doctorate in marine biology that an increase of more than 20% in the water level on that property into the wetlands or vernal pools would kill the marine life. And they also had concerns about stormwater affecting the residents across Flag Road in the neighborhood of the Wendy's restaurant. Just so many reservations. It became apparent to me, as I had suspected from last summer, that part of the planning board's challenge was that there were just so many dozens of boxes that had not been checked off for a detailed site approval plan to take effect, to even be engaged. And I attended many of the meetings last summer for the planning board and here at the ZBA, the selectmen's meetings. And it seemed to me to be a situation where, I mean, this is my opinion, that there were some intimidating tactics and bullying tactics against the planning board to rush a decision that was half-baked. And, you know, it even involved one meeting I attended where Mr. De Petri and his attorney got up, stormed out of the room in a huff. And, you know, it's just not productive. And I would, even Mr. Cipriano had referred to, or some correspondence he had with a very noted environmental attorney, that, you know, there's so many deficiencies in the current plan that, I don't want to put words into this, but that just didn't pass muster with Mass environmental law. So where remand might be an option, I mean, the whole thing boils down to, you need a lot more due diligence with the site plan and approval. And I guess the last thing I would say, too, there was some discussion at the meeting, at the Concom meeting, that your board, the ZBA, had waived some of the requirements, environmental requirements, that would, for Mr. De Petri, that would otherwise apply in projects of this size. And, you know, that could be an allegation. I don't really know the details on that, but that's certainly a concern. Anyway, thank you.
One minor point that was brought up, the Wendy's and water runoff, I thought that, was that not addressed and discussed and satisfied and incorporated into the plan? I thought that-
It was something that was addressed. I don't know whether the Conservation Commission was totally satisfied.
Well, I mean, as far as the owner of the Wendy's property, I thought that was brought up at meetings and-
He's been to a lot of meetings, and I-
I thought that was, I thought that was addressed and satisfied. Now, I don't, as far as I recall, that wasn't an open-ended-
But again, like I was saying, as we understand that we need to, I think we've reached a consensus, at least on one point, let's get and see what DEP is going to require. I mean, we hear, and no disrespect to the right of the public to speak, okay, but I thought you were on the right track a few minutes ago, and you're going to take a vote and take an action, because I think you've heard all the information. And even though we disagree on some points, I've never stormed out of a meeting in my career. May have left quickly. But I don't recall ever doing that. In fact, the night that he's speaking of, I remained, and I was with the planning board for several, for another half an hour after that, going over things. But regardless of that, I would ask the board, I think you have all the information that you need tonight to do whatever it is you're going to do tonight. And, you know, and I know everyone here wants to get back and watch the Celtics, so I would ask you to, you know, to make your decision, and whatever it is. I mean, I think you-
Chairman, may I briefly respond to Mr. Catanzaro's-
Actually, I have another-
I want to hear from the board members first, because one of the things we might consider is a vote to close the public hearing and go into deliberative session.
May, all right.
So if I understand this correctly, you're saying you really kind of want to stay things until you get a decision from the DEP and have full set of plans, right?
That's my preference number one, that we continue the public hearing, okay, until we get our decision from DEP. Then we resume this, so that you know what you're remanding to the planning board. And that seems to obviate the problem that the planning board has of getting plans that aren't complete.
Right.
Okay. What's that?
I mean, is one of the things within our-
Let's let Mr. Williams finish, and then- Yes, well, Mr. Catanzaro keeps interrupting the board members, Mr. Chairman.
With all due respect, he was answering my question. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, go.
So, I mean, I'm just suggesting, it's one of our options to remand with conditions based on, you know, DEP decision and full set of plans.
Yeah, so I don't think we would need to-
But I would also say that, I mean, I think they've got a valid point on, if things don't change, like what has been approved before, might also be a condition that, I mean, shouldn't be, if something had been approved and not changed, I understand the point of not opening it up again. I don't know if that helps, honestly.
So, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, you're required, in order to grant these two appeals, you have to have a four-to-one vote of the board. The two appeals, as I stated before, in the second line of the first appeal, it says a determination the plan was constructively approved. The third line in the second appeal was that deciding that the site plan was constructively approved, and the building inspector somehow or other made a mistake by not granting Mr. Catanzaro relief. Mr. Chairman, he's placed all his reliance on constructive approval. You have three members who've said they don't agree with constructive approval. Mr. Chairman, to avoid the need for the town to be involved in further litigation, you just need to make a decision on the two appeals before you, for which notice was given to the public under 40A Section 11. The citizens of Southborough are under the impression you're dealing with two appeals, seeking a decision on constructive approval. If you have three members who don't agree with constructive approval, Mr. Chairman simply stated in a non-legal phrase, "Why prolong the agony?" Mr. Catanzaro wants to continue this until the DEP is finished. What's he going to argue then? Is he going to change your mind, the three of you, on no constructive approval? And if he never appealed the November 17 decision, Mr. Chairman, the matter should be over tonight. So what he can do is, when he finishes the DEP, he can start from square one, go back to the planning board, file a complete application. And I would think that based on this experience, I'm sure the planning board's not looking to this application coming back any more than Mr. Catanzaro is. But I assume the next time around, the planning board will have learned. If the application is not complete upon filing, within 72 hours, they will deny the application under the bylaw because it's incomplete. So, Mr. Chairman, why not follow the simple provisions of your bylaw? If you don't have three votes to grant constructive approval, there's no basis for the appeal. If there's no basis for the appeal to grant the appeal, there's no basis for a continuance. So why not end it tonight, let Mr. Catanzaro, Mr. De Petri go back and do it the right way the next time? Thank you.
So I think, I would like to start moving towards some action here.
Yes, well, I'd like to speak, too, please. We have a right to speak, do we not, before you close this hearing? Yes, we do. We do have a right. Anyone here has a right to speak before you close this hearing. And I demand my right to speak.
No, but I'm happy to, if you want to-
Yes, I do. My name is David Parry, 22 Main Street, Southborough. Now, listen, you know, this is very awkward to me, because I'm good friends with Bill De Petri, and I think he's been dis-served by his attorney here. And, you know, his reputation has been hurt, because he tried to do the right thing. And we've had a demonstration tonight by his attorney. It's very interesting, you know, to sit back here and see the games being played, and I think misplayed. You know, first of all, he wants you to make a decision. He's desperate for this issue not to get back to the planning board, isn't he? Because three-quarters of the way through this meeting tonight, he says, he doesn't want you to make your decision at all. Just hold it back. So this is a classic, this is a classic case where he doesn't want it to go back to the board which has jurisdiction, namely the planning board, where it clearly should go back to the board which has jurisdiction. I just think it's really a disservice. I think Bill De Petri, his reputation has been hurt by here, by his attorney. I think it's way out of order. I think you should make a decision here to remand this thing. Either deny the thing outright, like Mr. Brackett says, or remand it back in the normal manner, so the Concom issues are clarified before site plan approval is granted. That's the normal procedure. And that would be, that would solve Mr. De Petri's problem by doing it in the right way, and save his reputation instead of this charade going on here continually. It's just a shame.
Thank you. Okay, let's make this the last comment, and then I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. You have spoken at least two times before. Mr. Green, okay. You haven't spoken yet, sir.
Yan Huang, 75 Flat Road. So I have, I'll start with a question first. Under the use variance condition 13, which was kind of most of the problem, I guess, here starts. But my question that related to that is, it says, "For all categories not covered by board site approval under the use variance site approval." So what is this use variance site approval? Which one is it? Because when I wanted to talk about the 40A part of the project during the comprehensive permit process of the public hearing, I never got a chance to speak there. So where would I have gotten the chance to speak about my concern about the 40A part of this part? So-
The what part?
The 40A part of this project, which is what we're talking about today, right? So I try, and among other people, try to talk about the 40A portion of the project during the comprehensive permit, and we were always shut down. So was I too late, or was that never happened?
I don't know the answer.
So-
If you have concerns about-
So, okay, never mind then. Let's move on then.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know how to answer.
So I assume that never happened then?
This is getting very complicated, so that's-
I don't think you can assume that. You're just talking to people that weren't hearing-
We're not at the stage of doing the site plan review. It's either going to be at the ZBA or the planning board, that's the issue. And then once there's a further hearing on that, then you'll have every opportunity to state what your concerns are.
So if, my concern is, the ZBA in the use variance wants to grant the planning board only residual site plan approval. But in the bylaw, in Section 10, Section 10, the zoning of 17410, Section E, it clearly states the planning board shall hold a public hearing under application for site plan approval. So my concern is that there was never a public hearing for the 40A portion of it specifically for those things that the ZBA covered. There was a planning board public hearing for the residual site part, but how would I then talk about the other parts of the project when it was only limited to just the residual? So my question then is, when did the other half, other major part of it, happen? So was I too late in joining this process, or was I never given the chance to speak about it?
So all I can say on that is, obviously, it's a controversy about whether that part of the use variance, whether you could or could not do that. But it's ultimately going to be an issue that's just litigated, decided by the courts. So we can't, we're not going to be deciding it tonight. But the one thing which hasn't, we know, was started and was not completed, and that's just the issue before us now, is the so-called residual site plan approval for those four categories on the 40A portion. And the issue is just, who's going to do that? How's it going to get done? What's the most efficient way to do it?
So if the other portion of the site plan approval for the 40A never took place before the planning board was supposed to do the residual site plan approval, how would they do their job? So I'm one, my question is, when did- would they do their job? So I'm one, my question is, when did the site plan approval for the forty A happen, or at least for the ZBA portion of it, the major part of it?
I don't know.
Okay, so, moving on, my other concern is, so, the site plan approval, I'm reading from the, this, again, the section ten site plan approval, the main thing of it is to, or at least my, the least thing that we, ZBA should be concerned about is, is supposed to assure safety, and the other, the authority that the ZBA has in terms of variance is limited, that it can't not do substantial harm to the public good, and that it can't subjectively denigrate from the intent or purpose of the bylaws. So, there, my concern there is, I'm not sure how the ZBA ever got the authority to do all this site plan approval, and apparently, the town council is just commenting on the, that the latter half of the condition thirteen, which is, and any other applicable criteria per the above reference, the, these categories. So, my concern is, would the ZBA considered remanding to the planning board to do a full site approval? Thank you.
Thank you.
John Green, Ten Tower Road. I just want to clarify, I think that, a good question just arose, is that the seventeen of twenty-one never happened. There was no site plan review done by the ZBA on a one-by-one basis of the seventeen that are presumably not part of the residual. So if you have a date of when that happened, I would love to watch the tape of it because it did not happen. The next part is that I do agree with Attorney Brackett, you're here to vote on whether or not this was constructively approved. I don't know how anything to do with CONCOM is going to change that. It makes no sense whatsoever, that the, the change of a plan at CONCOM or non-change of a plan at CONCOM is not going to make a difference. So I'd like to hear from Attorney Cipriano as to what you really should be doing tonight. It sounds to me as though the actual site plan was not, or it seems to be the decision of the board, or at least the feeling of the board, that it would not be constructively approved. So I would say that you need to vote on that. I don't think it's right that, you know, we all come in here and we're expecting you to vote on whether or not it's constructively approved, and you're going to tell us that it depends on whether or not it's going to change, you're not sure if it's going to change. Well, the fact of the matter is, it really doesn't matter if it's going to change. It's whether or not you're going to constructively approve it or not, changes or if there are changes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order, Attorney Brackett is incorrect. The appeal was specifically in the alternative. It was, we sought your decision that it was constructively approved, but right in my application, it says alternatively, reversal of planning board rejection and granting of major site plan approval pursuant to one seventy-four, ten B two, okay? So it is before the board, okay? Yes, I would like you to vote that it was constructively approved to obviate all of this, but I, okay, but that's the first vote, and then if it's not constructively approved, I would like you to make a decision on our application.
Mr. Chairman, just on that point, if I may, Mr. Katanzaro is completely wrong. He sat in this room on December sixth... You gotta wait for me to recognize you, okay? So, do you have a brief comment to be made about this? Because I am trying to wrap it up, and I'm being a little too indulgent about letting people...
Just to correct his point.
You're going to use a microphone?
I'll be happy to go use the microphone. Mr. Chairman?
Once again, Mr. Chairman, Gary Brackett, representing a group of concerned citizens. Mr. Katanzaro is wrong. He sat in this room on December sixth. When I appeared before the Board of Selectmen, I pointed out that one of the procedural irregularities was the fact that Mr. Katanzaro had filed an appeal on October twenty-eighth from the alleged failure to make a decision, when in fact, the written decision, as I cited on November six, on December sixth, had been issued on November seventeenth. Despite the fact, I told him that in this room on December sixth, he still didn't file an appeal within thirty days of November seventeenth. So his claim, it's in the alternative, Mr. Chairman, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't say constructively approved, or if you don't agree with constructive approval, as three of you do not agree, then by the way, it's an appeal on the merits. The appeal was premature because the written decision hadn't been issued. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Katanzaro, and then one final point. He keeps bringing up the sixty-day issue. Mr. Chairman, this is like a case of the emperor's clothes. There's no sixty-day issue. It's not in his appeal. It's not in your notice of this hearing. We've spent more than enough time tonight listening to him dancing around sixty days, thirty days, appeal on the merits of November seventeenth. Mr. Chairman, if you look at your own documents, you have two alleged constructive approvals, which you, Mr. Chairman, on January eighteenth said, there's no legal authority to support that. You checked with the town clerk, and the town clerk confirmed that. So, Mr. Chairman, I recommend you move the matter to a decision, and you vote to deny the appeals, and there's no remand to the planning board. The planning board decision is final.
Okay, thanks. And then, Aldo, I think you were interrupted. If you could just address, I think the issue was basically, you know, I think what Mr. Katanzaro is suggesting is a vote on the constructive approval or not. And then, Mr. Brackett disagrees with it, but I think that we then, if we find that it's not been constructively approved, we should take another vote on what to do. What's your opinion on that, and also on the, the issue about the votes that are required? I think that, because this, this appears to just be under the town bylaw, as opposed to forty A, that the supermajority wouldn't apply. We don't know how the vote's going to come out, so it may not matter, but...
All right. The, one of the issues before you is whether or not, based upon what the planning board did or did not do, whether or not there was constructive approval. This is an unusual request of an administrative agency. These kind of things are decided by the courts, but I think it's properly before you to make that determination. I think that Member Di Maria was most on focus about what really happened in terms of the planning board acting, and that should be taken into consideration as to whether or not you determine a constructive grant. To, to allow, as you pointed out, to allow a constructive grant under the vagaries of the, of the bylaw as it applies to this case for a project of this size respectfully is not advisable, but it's ultimately your decision.
Thank you. Do you want to have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we need to leave the public hearing open to get details about the DEP?
I don't think so.
Say that again?
I was wondering if we needed it to remain open to receive the information from their DEP.
What's, what information are you looking for?
Where it came out, what sort of timing it's going to be to have another set of plans, you know, I mean...
This is really just about kind of control of the hearing. If there's something, if there's an issue where you want to get more information from the applicant or from town council, then we shouldn't, then we should keep it open. But instead of having, we're starting to get the same comments over and over again, and so I think it makes sense to close the public hearing. We enter into deliberative session, and we decide this. But if there's a specific kind of question you have in mind, we can get it answered now.
No, I mean, without knowing how it's going to turn out with DEP, and where, where, and if any changes are going to be made, it's hard to...
And that process will probably take at least a hundred and twenty days.
With the DEP?
I, I think that we could just, we could remand to the planning board, and then, I guess it's really up to you when, when you refile with the planning board. And then you could...
I mean, I think, again, if we remand to the planning board, we need to have some specific instructions on it, you know, to remand and just say, start over again, I don't think is appropriate. So, you know, I guess my, without knowing what, if anything's going to change from the DEP, it's hard to know exactly what those focused points of, let's get through A, B, and C are.
So do you think it should be continued? Is that what you're suggesting, or?
I'm, I'm thinking continued is my sense, because I think until we really know what's going to happen with the DEP, I think we can determine on the constructive approval component.
I just think that if we continue, we're going to have another hearing that's exactly like this here. It's going to go on and on, over all the same issues, and, you know, the two or three, the three-hour mark is usually, by my experience, the total oversaturation point. I think we're already there.
Mr. Chairman, stepping forward again, we've all been discussing the prospect, and you've been discussing remand. The other alternative is if there is no discernible time upon which the planning board is going to get additional information, then procedurally, you would look to what they did and why they did it. And they did it for insufficient time and insufficient detail. And if there's no known factor or time in which they're going to have additional information, then the other procedural option is to uphold the planning board's denial.
Well, what I, what I think we should do is to, do you want, you want to close the public hearing?
You're going to mention both appeals, right?
No, we're just first dealing with this appeal, yeah. Does that sound all right? Close the public, close the public hearing and then enter into deliberative session? Someone want to make a motion?
If we, I guess procedurally, I get confused. If we close the public hearing, but the decision is to wait upon DEP findings, how does that, how does that...
What, here's what I'm thinking.
How does that work?
So if we, if we remand and say after the Conservation Commission has, has made its action...
Well, they've made their action. We're waiting for...
You're waiting on DEP.
DEP.
May twenty-fifth, there's a, there's a vote, okay? So then if they say, we'll, we give you what you want, then there's a set of plans and that issue was resolved. But if, if there's an appeal from that, if there's an appeal from whatever, if there's an appeal to the DEP from whatever happens at the CONCOM, then it's going to take a long time for that appeal to take place. And then if we were to say, you know, that, that the planning board doesn't have to act on it until the DEP appeal is decided, then we potentially have another year or so when the outstanding issue about the four criteria still hasn't happened. So just, I'm thinking to try to just keep moving this along where ultimately, a lot of things are going to be decided by the courts, not here, just to keep moving things along. One of the things you can do is to say, after the DEP, I'm sorry, after the CONCOM has made its decision, within, you know, X number of days, you refile for site plan approval, and then it's, it's subject to these...
To whom?
To the planning board. It's subject to those four conditions. And it's also, to the extent that there's any, the DEP appeal, or that the, the order of conditions changes things, then you have to go back to the planning board to have a site plan approval on, on the review change. But at least, at least the existing set of plans that would be subject to the DEP appeal would, would just keep going. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, just one point of order. The CONCOM has voted to deny the order of conditions.
It has?
Yeah, yes.
That's what I'm saying, I didn't...
Okay, all right.
That's the right decision.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I speak real quick before you close the public hearing? How do you close a public hearing and then continue it to another, another meeting, right? So you say, hey, we have, we have another meeting in three months from now when something happens, and now you've closed the public hearing.
We haven't closed the public hearing.
I know, but you were about to. That's why I got up here and said something. And, by the way, you're, you're here to vote on whether or not it's constructively approved, right? You're not here to, to find out whether or not, in the future, if there is a change that is all of a sudden constructively approved. And I'd like to remind you that we still don't have a date on when the other seventeen of the twenty-one were actually done as site plan review. And if you could get us that date, that would be great. We'd love to review the tape of that because it didn't happen. So when we start, you keep talking about the four, let's talk about twenty-one. We're not talking about four. Talk about twenty-one. And in, what's, what's the difference? So, so say, say CONCOM comes back and, or DEP comes back and says there's no changes, is it all of a sudden constructively approved? Does that change your mind? How does that make any sense? Doesn't make any sense. It's either constructively approved or it's not. Thank you.
What about closing the public hearing, going into deliberative session?
May I ask, Aldo?
Yeah.
I'm still, I'm a little confused still. If we, if we close, if, if we vote to wait to, you know, to continue it, to hear back from the DEP, can we, are we, should we be closing it now as a...
Are you, are you...
A little stuck procedurally here.
Are you considering keeping this public hearing open until there's a response from the DEP?
We, that would take a, we can't do that. We can't do that. That would take...
That's not, that's not an option.
That is not, that is not a feasible option administratively.
I'm just talking about closing this public hearing because I think we're close enough to take a vote, and we can do that without further public comment, because I think we have received a lot of public comment, and I think we're ready to make a decision. So, you know, the only issue is we've had other ones where we start deliberating, and then we want to say the applicant, well, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? So, I mean, what, what I'm proposing, and maybe you can let me know if you think it's a good idea or not, is to remand to the planning board, and they file whatever set of plans they file within X days of the decision, and then if, there'll be a, a site plan review for the four criteria, and if there's any change that happens as a result of the DEP appeal, they have to come back to the planning board for a further site plan approval about those changes. It's kind of like when, on the forty Bs, when there's been a comprehensive, forty Bs, where there's been a comprehensive permit, and then there's a determination of insubstantial change or substantial change. It would be kind of like that. It's just to keep this thing moving so that ultimately, when there are appeals, which there will be, it'll be decided not by us, it'll be decided by the courts, and we just keep things moving.
And couldn't it be procedurally that we remand it back to the planning board, and that, their decision ends up being contingent on what comes back from the DEP anyway?
That may be likely. So that, so then if the DEP...
Well, I mean, they can't just go right to the, they can't just take the same plan that's been, that's been denied by the planning board, back to the planning board. Then that's, I think, the only, trying to avoid the back and forth.
No, but if we, if we give the instruction that, basically...
I mean, that's why, that's why I'm getting at, do we, do we wait for, do we wait for something from, I mean, nothing's going to change, if, if you, if it's, if it's, if it's sent back to the planning board, you know, tonight, nothing's going to change in the plan that's going to the planning board right now.
Is there a full set of plans?
What do you think of that?
I mean, that's exactly what's going to occur. So you enter an order of remand, okay? But then, you know, what I thought I heard you saying, it conditioned that the planning board is not to take any action until we get potentially revised plans from the DEP. This, the, one thing that is correct is the, there will be an appeal to the DEP, and it is going to take, they, they're supposed to decide the appeal in seventy days. They never do, okay? Then there's a potential for an appeal after that, okay, to, through the administrative process. I mean, I don't know whether that's going to occur or not, but at least if you, if, if you're going to do that, you remand it, and you, I would say, with, with the direction that we, we're not going to go back to the planning board with the same plans that they said wasn't enough information.
All right. Okay, that's, that's the more efficient way to do it.
No, well, I don't, no.
If I can just make one statement, maybe ask through you, town council to confirm?
You, you want to, if you can, get them, this isn't really a point of order you're, you're raising, but why don't you just get the microphone and, and say whatever your, what your point is?
Mr. Chairman? Here. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, and I only say this because I deal with planning boards, and I have over the years, you cannot take a vote to remand until you first take a vote whether to grant or deny the appeal. So the proper motion is motion to grant the appeal for...
So the proper motion is motion to grant the appeal for failure issue of decision within 30 days. Yes or no? Failure to grant the appeal for the building inspector not to grant zoning relief. Yes or no? If you're going to consider relief, you can't do that until you take a vote on the appeals. Thank you.
In fairness, we've heard that argument like five times now.
So let's close the public hearing and enter deliberative session.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I just wanted to say...
Is there a...
I want to, you were getting to a point, I thought.
The point that, yes, that if you condition the remand so that the planning board, that we have to then schedule a hearing, or you remander to the planning board now with the understanding, we're not going to show up there next week with the same plans, because it doesn't make any sense, okay? Within 20 days of us getting a decision from the DEP, okay, we then have to...
With that in enough time.
Okay, well, how many times then? 30 days?
Well, if the, if the plans don't change 20 days, fine. If the plans change, we're going to need like three months to change the plans.
But we could still at least then appear before the planning board within 20 days of getting a decision from the DEP, telling them, "Yes, guys, the plans have changed dramatically. This is, you know, let's start, we'll get into a scheduling thing with them," okay? I mean, that's what makes, I think, makes some sense in terms of if this board's going to close the public hearing. That you have a remand, okay, and you don't put the planning board in the position to have to deal with this on the same plans that they weren't happy with.
But here's the other problem, and I presume council's going to agree. There could be a further appeal beyond DEP.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
A final adjudication, we could say, a final adjudication.
That's a date unknown, respectfully. That would be a date unknown. This is a difficult standard. And I'm not sugge... I just remind you that there is another alternative for now, and my question would be is this, is if, if the board were to consider upholding the planning board's denial based upon what you know tonight, what would the developers' counsel respectfully recommend after that? Would he resubmit at a later time when the, when the, when all appeals had, had been exhausted at the, at the environmental level? I'm curious what he would do in that alternative, because remand is, you're opening it up to dates uncertain, but, and remand is a great idea as long as there's quantified information that that board needs in a time certain. But that's not available. So is it a denial, excuse me, is it upholding the planning board's denial, and that sits as an administrative decision, and then at a later time, the council for the developer decides, "Okay, we're going to wait, and then we're going to resubmit on our own"? I mean, I don't know, but I'm just asking that as an administrative alternative. I don't, I don't want to get too, you know, I don't want to delve too deeply into this administrative procedure for you, but, because it's your call, but I'm curious to know what the developer would do if, if the determination was made, uphold the planning board denial.
What would he do?
Would he just appeal to the court, or would he, or would they wait?
Well, I don't know what I would do if that, if that was the decision. I think that the reason that we're here is that the planning board needs some direction from this board and can just reject without any instruction, okay? You're, you're, we'll be back here, because then you're going to go back to the planning board again, whether it's two months, six months, or whatever, and you're not going to get any direction from this board on the remand. I think a remand is entirely appropriate. You folks can't control the timing of other administrative procedures. I don't know how long it's going to take. He is right. If there's a further appeal after the DEP appeal, it could take 12, 18 months.
You could say, "After the, the decision on the DEP, DEP appeal, and the exhaustion of all appellate options, whatever, you shall, within 20 days, resubmit an application, and then it'll, it'll reflect what happened at the DEP." And I'm just trying to reduce the, reduce the likelihood of another appeal back to us. That's one of my concerns.
The only thing the bill is saying is that rather than 20 days, you make it 90 days after the final adjudication, because if we are going to have to re-engineer the way that CONCON is saying you might have to, those plans are going to take, are going to take some work and some time.
That makes sense to me.
It makes it, I'd be almost kind of curious what Mr. Morris might have to say about that.
Can I ask a quick question while Mr. Morris comes to the podium? Do we have to decide this tonight? Because we are here for two, two matters, two appeals, but is this not something that we can take up in a future meeting?
I want to decide this tonight.
Because we're trying to project what's going to happen in the future, and it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky spot.
Basically, I think if you're doing what Mr. Cipriano was suggesting there, I think, yeah, we wouldn't decide it. If we just said we upheld the planning board's denial of site plan review, we really wouldn't be deciding anything, and there'd still be more and more uncertainty. So we, I think we could do that, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of it.
Right. So what I'm hearing is that there's issues with Conservation Commission and DEP and some other matters that need to be settled, so if we don't take any decision on the remanding the site plan review back to the planning board, won't they need to come back to the planning board once the plan is changed? So I just don't see why we have to make a decision on this now.
So, but I think what, what we're talking about, saying, within 90 days of the decision on the DEP appeal and the exhaustion of all appellate decisions, then, then there's a, there's a final set of plans reflecting that, and then the site plan approval goes forward. And that seems perfectly...
Won't that happen anyway, without our remanding this?
I don't know, but what's, what's the harm in just making that very clear, instead of having a very ambiguous decision where we just uphold the denial because there was insufficient information and then, but, you know, what was the insufficient information that stopped this from happening? I mean, I'm thinking that it's going to, it would take a long time anyway before this is ever at the stage of being built, because there's so many court appeals. You know, why not try to have something happen while there's those appeals going on?
So my question's from Mr. Cipriano, and my question previously about Prudential versus Westwood. So if the, from what I understand, there is some discussion tonight about these limited four points that the planning board was asked to review, but that the zoning board might not have looked at these other numbers of, of points having to do with the site plan review. So if the, if the, if the ZBA decides not to make any decision on, on what to do with the planning board now, if the plans are changed and come back to the ZBA or to, to the planning board, would the planning board be able to review the full site plan with all of their authority?
I've said this, I'm going to say it again, and I respect your question, probably about seven times on cable cast. I put that language in, the catch-all language about additional site plan review under the provision, because the initial legal question to me was, did the planning board have jurisdiction for site plan review pending the zoning board's review at the time? And the decision I made was yes. So the only way I could address that appropriately was to put the, the condition in proper legal form so that it would address generally those criteria under the bylaw. If the planning board decides to go through all of those criteria, we'll defend it, because that's what I believed in the beginning, and that's what I said two and a half years ago.
Well, my view is the language is what it is, and then this, this will just be decided by the planning board and ultimately the courts. Mr. Morris?
Was there a question to me earlier?
I don't know. Someone said they thought it would be good to hear from you.
Well, I was curious on your, your opinion on if we, I guess, if we, if we're sending this back to you with, with the timeframes that were, I guess, discussed, you know, pending, you know, DEP and other, another eloquent word you use, the other...
All, all the DEP decision and then any administrative or court appeal on top of that, all that done.
I, I think, I think that, Mr. Chairman, you, you earlier said that you wanted to make a decision that would reduce the potential for another appeal, or more interpretation of what, or adjustments to these things. So, and I agree with that. So I believe that the simplest way to handle this is to vote yes or no. Do you uphold the plant, planning board's rejection of the plan or not? If you uphold our rejection of the plan with no, no timeframes, nothing, it doesn't change anything relative to what the developer can do. If the DEP determines that the plan is good to go, then they resubmit, they reapply for a site plan to the planning board, and we start all over again. If the plans have to be revised, they revise the plans, and they submit it to the planning board, and we start all over again with, with the site plan review. With no, I, I think by, by putting in these conditions relative to what others may do and when they do it is, is just unnecessarily complicating it. I don't think it changes the, the wide-open options that the developer has if you, if you vote to support the planning board's action to reject. And again, I think it was, well, whether it was said or not, I said it, I think, at the beginning of this hearing a couple of months ago, that the planning board, for any, any proponent, under any conditions, would accept an application for a site plan and review it on its merits. We're a group of five professionals. It's our job to do that, and that's, that's the way we would proceed, regardless of who the people are or what's happened in the past. Focus on the site plan, focus on its merits, follow the rules, and take the appropriate action. So I recommend that you just vote yes or no, and then it gives the developer full options with no, no conditions based on other people's actions or inactions and timeframes.
Okay. I still, I think we've narrowed to the point where we've heard enough public comment that it makes sense to close the public hearing, enter deliberative session, and then we will, we will decide this. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So I can just begin and say how, you know, what I'm thinking of here. I think there is a difference between affirming the, the planning board's denial and remanding it to the planning board and saying that within 90 days of the resolution of DEP, DEP appeal and all the appeals, that, you know, they'll resubmit, and then it will focus on the four criteria. And I think there's a, there's a, the way I'm suggesting, I think, is just provides a little more certainty about what exactly is happening than just, than affirming what the planning board did. So that, that's what I, that's what I would suggest. And on the, well, you know, whether the four criteria, the, the part of the use variance which said only those four criteria, I mean, there, there is some leeway there about whether it covers the other ones, and Mr. Cipriano's now said that he thinks it might cover it. So I, I think if we just parroted the language in the use variance that said, you know, "This is what you're to consider," that would make sense. Does this make sense? To you, it does?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have a little bit of a hard time with the administrative difference between affirming and, and remanding. It seems like you're essentially going through the same procedure, like it's, they're back with the planning board one way or the other.
I, I don't know. I thought that having a decision that...
I mean, I'm honestly, I'm leaning more towards the remand.
We add more clarity by what we're suggesting now. I mean, to just... I don't know. I stick by what I said. I think my way of going about it makes some sense, but totally up to the board and what other people feel. Debbie, what, how do you feel?
I think it, it adds a layer of complexity because there's some uncertainty, and I just don't think that it's, I don't think that we need that uncertainty right now. We're not here to do that. I think we're here to make a decision on the appeals. And I think that eventually, the plans will come back to the planning board, and I don't see the purpose of remanding, so I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Okay.
I mean, it seems to me we can, we can say that, you know, the, the appeal for constructive deni, approval is denied, but we, you know, remand it back to the planning board based on, you know, the, the conditions we stated within, within 90 days of the decision and completion of appeals on the, by the DEP. That's where I feel.
I think we agreed it's not the DEP though, right? I mean, there was discussion about all court appeals and all kinds of other things. Was that part of this?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of maybe wording it that their decision and whatever appeals may result.
From the DEP decision.
From the DEP decision, yes.
Do you agree we should also just take a vote, and then it'll be reflected in our decision about whether we agree that it's constructively approved or not, and then, you know, that allows what, whoever wants to appeal that in whatever direction they can, they can, but at least, as a result of this whole hearing, we had, we at least made a decision. And my vote would be that it was not constructively approved. Do you think we can take that vote now?
I, I do agree.
Okay, so, someone have a motion? Well, we're not, this, this is not on the whole...
This isn't the whole thing?
No, just, if we just first take a vote on the board's determination, wasn't...
It's two separate, it's two separate matters that need to be ruled out.
Okay. Forget about this. We're first just taking a vote on whether we find that the site plan was constructively approved. That's what I'm suggesting. And then it sounds like there's a consensus that it was not constructively approved, but I know, Paul, you, you might differ.
I differ.
Okay. So does someone want to make a motion that we find that the planning, the site plan was not constructively approved?
Yeah, I move that the board find that the, the site plan was not constructively approved in the planning board's denial of site plan review. Have a second.
Second. All those in favor? All those against? And then, is there a consensus here about remanding it back to the planning board? And then, with the instructions I had in mind about, within 90 days after the DEP appeal and the exhaustion of all further appeals from that, that they, that they refile, and that the planning board review it for the, whatever, paragraph 13 of the use variance decision says.
I would go along with that.
Would you be in favor of that?
Yeah, but just to, just to make sure I'm saying this right, or whatever, we're saying this right, that they have to do something within 90 days, but is there a timeframe which they have to, like, reapply or reappeal to the planning board? Because I think that was the issue, was not to go back, like, is there a certain timeframe that they have to go back?
It would be dependent on what, what happens there, okay? And the benefit of it is that...
There's no sense in going back now, just to be told no to the same thing again.
Exactly. That's the, that's the whole idea of this.
Okay, so I didn't know if there's like a, you know, if, if we're, if we're sending it back, do they have to refile within 30 days?
Within 90, within 90 days.
No, no. There's, there's nothing that's...
They're, they're done until 90 days after all the appeals.
Okay, so we can, we can have that, we can have that done.
Right, and kind of to their point, if they submitted the same thing all over again, it'd be crazy on their part.
So then, I think...
I think we need to debate that.
Debbie, I think your vote is just, you're going to vote to say that the planning board's denial was proper, right?
Right.
Okay. So then, there is now a difference where if you, if there are four votes in favor of what we're suggesting, the vote would be four to one, the whole potential issue about whether there is a supermajority or three vote would be avoided. So, so if you join with what I'm suggesting, and David and Craig, you agree, then I think we have a decision to just avoid that whole further issue that could be litigated. Someone want to make a motion? Yeah, so the, the idea to get in there is, you know, 90 days after decision on DEP appeal and all further appeals.
And the conclusion of all further appeals related to that decision.
And then there will be a, you know, they shall refile, and the planning board shall do that, paragraph 13 of the use variance.
Should it also be in receipt of the final plan? I think that's what Mr. Morris said, is in the issues that they haven't received.
I thought, I thought the idea of getting the 90 days after the DEP... I thought, I thought the idea of getting the ninety days after the DEP appeal and all further appeals is if the, if that was resolved with someone saying, no, everything you're building is illegal, you need to move things around, or something like that, then there would be a, another set of plans.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that, yeah, that was the idea behind the ninety days. If they, if there's something to change, they need time to, to change it, so.
And I think if it's not final plans, the planning board's gonna, is gonna reject it.
Right, the planning board's gonna reject it, so we just put it into, into their process.
I don't think the language needs to be in there.
Yeah, I don't think it does either. I would agree.
Okay, so. The motion is to reject...
Just to remand to the planning board.
We don't have to comment on... Do, do we have to deny their denial? Do we have to reject their denial and therefore we're going to remand it? Do we have to make the motion that way?
I mean, we already voted on the constructive approval, didn't we?
Do you have the, what the bylaw is then? One seventy... I think it just says to, to reverse. We could take a vote to reverse and remand. So that's what the sta- that's what the bylaw says, reverse. We have the power to reverse.
So, so the motion is to reverse the planning board's decision and remand the applicant back to the planning board?
To refile within ninety days of any, you know, the decision on the DEP appeal and all further appeals. And the planning board would then conduct the, you know, residual site plan approval set out in paragraph thirteen of the, of the use variance. And then in the decision, we would just copy the exact language of that into the decision.
Reverse the decision and remand the plans, applicant?
I, I don't think you need to get the exact wording of that into the motion, but just write it out into the decision, but...
Okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah. You can take a stab at it and then...
Item of clause, item?
Let's see on, on page sixteen. No, this is, this is the use variance decision.
Okay.
See if I got this.
I move to reverse the planning board decision and remand the applicant back to the planning board within ninety days of the DEP decision and all related appeals of that decision for the planning board to review the site plan per item thirteen on page sixteen of the use variance.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? I think the next thing up is the...
So that concludes the seven o'clock meeting?
That concludes the seven o'clock meeting. We're now at the seven oh five meeting. Exactly, we're now taking up the building inspector one. What do you say? Thank you. So, you know, I, I don't know if we need a whole, I don't think we need a whole presentation on it. My fav- my vote would be to deny that appeal. And part of it is, we've had a lot of matters before us where it's, it's a chapter forty A, section seven appeal. It's an appeal of what the, if someone goes to the building inspector and, and with a very complicated legal issue and says, you know, here's my position on this complicated legal issue, write me back a letter saying whether or not you agree or disagree. And then that's really just to, to generate an, an appeal, okay? I think Mark's job is to, by enforcing the, the bylaw, that's, you know, if someone complains that someone's not using their property in the right way, he goes out and he enforces or doesn't enforce the bylaw. To me, that's what an enforcement request is. So we're facing more and more of these, these types of appeals where, you know, Mark, you get, you get a letter, Mark gets a letter that has this very complicated thing about Park Central or another matter and his either issuing a letter that agrees with them or not agrees with them or failing to act is then a grounds to then bring it up to us to have this decided, I think prematurely. Okay, so that's why, I mean, I am in favor of denying that appeal both because I think it wasn't constructively approved and I think Mark Robidoux did completely the right thing in just not responding to that at all. Because what authority does he have to issue a, what would his letter have, have said? You know, if he just wrote on a piece of paper, I agree it's constructively approved, would that really mean anything? So that's my view. I'm in, I'm in favor of denying it for that reason. And by deny, we just end that and then if anyone wants to take an appeal from that, they can do that too.
Yeah, I think since we all, or most of us believe that it wasn't constructively approved, then it's kind of an easy one.
I didn't need to make a long-winded explanation about it, but I just, those are my feelings on the issue.
I only had a ten-minute presentation, but I'll waive it.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, does the applicant have anything to...
That is appreciated.
Mr. Brackett, you...
I have no presentation.
Okay, all right.
I have a question on previous vote. I don't understand the language and I had one question on that. Could I, could I ask that?
No.
No, no, I'm...
It's closed.
I really was just kind of in, we wanted to just handle the second appeal.
Well, it's closed anyway.
We did close the public hearing and I, I understand your concern about the issue. I'm just trying to handle this in orderly fashion. So does, is there a motion on, I can talk to you about it afterwards though.
Well, so that is a polite answer. It's a simple question.
Okay.
Just a, just a question of procedure because there are two different items here. No, it has to do with, you, you just voted. I, I understand that that can't change. But to try to understand what you voted, I believe I heard you say that you reversed the planning board's vote. So the planning board voted to reject the plan. So you've reversed that, which means now the plan is approved.
No, 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 no.
It was reverse and remand. After they, after the DEP, what if the developer decides after, if the conglomerate rejects the plan and he decides, I'm not going to appeal it to the DEP, I'll just revise the plan. I'm, I'm, I'll add, I'll take away a few units, I'll add a few detention basins, I'll never go to the DEP. The conservation commission looks at it and says, you're good to go. How does that affect the language of your vote if they never go to the DEP? What happens to the site plan?
I mean, they've said they are going to the DEP.
Come back because the plan changed.
Yeah, everybody with the DEP.
They'd have to come back anyway because the plan changed. Actually, it's a good point.
They have to come back.
No, you said when everything has been exhausted, if we, if we don't appeal, then, then it's over. Then we would have ninety days...
It's exhausted.
To go back.
Okay.
You're remanding this to the zone, to the planning board. If we don't appeal, but which we are, okay, we're, we're in the same situation.
So, let's, let's stick back to the second appeal and taking care of this. Thanks.
Oh, I move that we close the hearing on Park Central appeal of the building inspectors' failure to respond.
Second. All those in favor?
And we are moving to deny this appeal.
If everyone agrees.
I'll agree to this one.
Okay.
I move we deny the Park Central appeal of the building inspectors' failure to issue decision pursuant to MGL chapter forty A, section seven, to enforce town bylaw one seventy-four dash ten F. Second.
All those in favor? Okay. So just some administrative, I think that concludes the whole Park Central argument. Thank you, and I know these are hard issues that we're dealing with and I want you to know we're trying our best to reach the right decision. So the, we, we got some minutes and then we also got to set a...
And our administrative stuff also.
We got some minutes. We want to schedule a meeting for the other things we got in the pip- in the pipeline and... Okay. Thank you. Thank you. How about that's the question, how do we end up just caught up?
Karen, Karen, what do we have for minutes to approve? I thought we were pretty caught up. Just the ones that you, you gave? Yeah, the one, so these ones that you gave me. Okay, thanks.
So we're looking at the minutes of our May third meeting?
Yeah.
I didn't have any issue with it, Andrew. I had no issue with it.
I, I'm gonna read it quickly, okay. I don't, I don't really have an issue with these. They look fine.
I'm trying to condense them.
Having not been present doesn't matter.
Okay.
Good luck on the con- condensing them tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the minutes from our zoning board of appeal meeting on May third.
Second.
All those in favor?
I abstain due to my absence.
Okay, passes four nothing then. And so we scheduled the Hillside Avenue continued matter for June seventh, two thousand seventeen. And then, David, you said you're not available the, the second two weeks of June. We're this, we're now scheduling a hearing on some other things that are in the pipeline.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I think even if you're not available that week, Debbie, if you're around the last two weeks of June, you could sit on one of those and then, yeah?
If I may interrupt?
Yeah.
I know from that meeting we had two meetings ago, can we try to keep this to, especially during the summer, once, you know, once a month?
So...
At, at seven?
And that's why I, I was strongly, we were looking for a way to just, I would have been in favor of voting on the thing we decided before this. And that would prevent us from being in this situation, so I am trying to, to, to avoid this situation. But each time we continue something, we tend to have two meetings in, in a month, which kind of stinks. But if we had, they weren't gonna agree to have us join this with another one and I think it would have put us right up against the filing deadline, which would have been tough.
No, I, I understand that.
So that's why, I completely agree, but this just seems to have, keep happening and happening.
No, I understand that.
So the, the issue is whether to go on
So I have...
The twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
So currently, I received and saw on the website, a variance application for one sixty-eight Middle Road. So that is currently in-house, date stamped and needs a time for a public hearing. And then I'm expecting another application for a special permit for many-car garage, additional five cars on top of three.
And what's the address on that?
Thirty-nine Sears.
Oh, yes, okay.
So we can't discuss that for...
But I don't have that application in, so...
Oh, that's not in? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The applicant's been discussing getting it in.
But so...
But you just need a meeting time for that one.
Yeah, we're talking, the issue is the twenty-first or the twenty-seventh?
To have all these things on the same docket.
By all these things, we're just talking about two things.
Two things, the, the both items.
Hillside is the seventh.
Oh. Hillside is the seventh.
They're not sitting on that, so don't worry about that.
And that's the only thing that would be on that night is?
That, so far, that's the only thing on for June seventh.
And for this Middle Road issue, why not have...
No, it's too late. There's not enough time for public hearing.
That was gonna be my next question. I was getting there. Okay, so, whatever.
It's up to you. You want to do it on the twenty-first? Actually, I, that looks like a bad time for me. What about the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twen- the twenty-eighth, that's right.
That's fine.
Okay. So we'll have it, I don't think we need to go vote on, we'll just do it, the twenty-eighth. If you put on your calendar.
So I'll do one sixty-eight Middle Road at seven PM. Does that work?
Andrew, I thought we did need to vote, no? Has that always been a...
I can, I can just...
A pass, a pass?
You can just, Karen, I can just schedule it, it just...
And then if the other application comes in, Andrew can schedule that, that time for that, if it comes in on time.
Oh, I'm thinking of like if you continue something, we need to vote on it. That's what I'm, I'm sorry. You're right.
And also...
The other one comes in, just add it to that.
The other thing we will have to talk about on the, the twenty-eighth is election of a chairman for the next year, for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, because my term expires on June thirtieth.
And you're leaving?
I'm not leaving. I have a, a, I think I'm through, through two thousand nineteen, but...
Your chairmanship expires.
My chairmanship expires and, and there'll be a vote on who's the new chairman.
Would you, are you, are you interested in continuing as chairman?
I think I am and part of it is, but I think if I did, I would only do it for one more year and then I would just, we would pass the reins off.
I, I am, I am comfortable with you as our chairman.
So let's put that on...
We're looking for...
Can we put that on the seventh?
I am very comfortable with that.
Can we throw that on the seventh?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, I mean...
Yeah, that, that's not a bad idea.
I don't know how Lee feels about it, but, you know, he's a full member of the board, he'll vote too, but we can just put it on the agenda and then... You're, you're right, if you, if you want to take a vote on the seventh instead of the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
There's no reason not to.
I'm, I'm...
It's a short enough meeting.
At the moment, I won't be here, but I, I guess I would come for that for sure.
Oh, okay, then let's put it on the twenty-eighth because this is, this is full board. And, and David, I think your term expires.
Correct, I have to...
Are you, are you seeking re...
I am, yeah, I am seeking, I have to file it, but yeah, I am seeking.
Okay, and, and Debbie is too.
I just did it, yeah.
Okay, great. All right.
So I'm putting that election of chairman on the twenty-eighth agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have to reelect the clerk? I do so much.
I think.